Thank you. That one's on the agenda, isn't it? Steve Anderson. Got that one.
Sure.
Yep. Ladies and gentlemen, it is seven o'clock. We will call our meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Jim Albright to come up and do our invocation for us, please. Jim is the citizens for the drug-free community, and he's going to do a proclamation after we do the pledge of allegiance. Jim, if you would, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Powerheads, please. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you and just give you thanks for this day that you've created. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of it. Thank you for blessing each of us individually and collectively as a city. Lord, I just thank you especially for city workers, some of who put their lives on the line on a daily basis, that we would lift them up in prayer, remember them and their efforts and the city staff. And thank you for this wonderful, awesome town of Graham. And Lord, I just pray you be with us as we hear differences of opinion this evening that would help everybody to listen well and just make the best decision they can to the best of their ability and ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, before I turn the floor over to Jim again, I do want to thank everybody for reaching out to me during my little vacation I took. I had a real big time, but thank you very much for all the cards and the love and the expression of care that you gave me. Thank you. Jim, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The Red Ribbon Campaign is the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation, reaching millions of young people during Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd to the 31st each year. Why Red Ribbon Week? The Red Ribbon Campaign was started when drug traffickers in Mexico City murdered a DEA agent in 1985. This began the continuing tradition of displaying red ribbons as a symbol of intolerance towards the use of drugs. The mission of Red Ribbon Campaign is to present a unified and visible commitment towards the creation of a drug-free America. So we have some individuals from Graham High School, some of the leaders from the student body, and they're going to introduce themselves individually, and then they're going to read the proclamation, kind of take turns with that. And also want to recognize Mr. Michelson. Would you like to say something?
I just want to say thank you on behalf of Graham High School for having us this evening. It's very exciting as an AP Government and Civics teacher to see city council and what I teach at work on a night like tonight. So I'm going to definitely bring this in my lesson plans tomorrow, but I will invite forward Genesis Wilkins, our student body president, Ishmael Castillo, our sophomore class president, and Emmanuel Sanchez, our senior class president, and they're going to read our proclamation for this evening.
Alcohol and other substances misuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages affecting people from all communities and of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, and it is imperative that visible and unified prevention, education, treatment, and recovery effects, including harm reduction efforts, be launched and supported to eliminate the demand for drugs, to mitigate drug-related harm, promote the health and well-being of all people, and...
And whereas local collaboration of concerned groups, sector systems, and individuals are working together toward a common goal of enhancing a community of care by addressing the factors in home, schools, and communities that increase the risk of substance misuse and promoting the factors that minimize the risk of substance misuse. Whereas the National Family Partnership and LMAs Citizens for a Drug-Free Community are sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to a substance-free lifestyle, no misuse of legal or illegal substance. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during the Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st, and whereas...
Businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, youth, and others will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the city of Graham further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Graham does hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week and encourages its citizens to participate in substance misuse prevention and education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. This the first day of October 2019.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have some ribbons for the council members?
All right.
Also got a banner that will be floated out for the city halls.
Let's pass it down there. Frankie, he will take care of that for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Michelson sends our best regards to this high school, and thank you for bringing the kids here with us tonight. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we have our consent agenda. First, A is approval minute September 3rd, B is approval minute September 18th, C is approved resolution to approve and continue traffic safety project contract with the governor's highway safety program, D is approved resolution declaring intent to lease city-owned surplus real property located at 213 South Main Street, E is approved request by LMAs Arch for the closure of two parking spaces, and F, approved resolution authorizing conveyance of 20 SCBA air packs to the Graham High School. Does anybody want to pull anything off of the consent agenda? If not, then I need a motion to approve.
So move, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Ladies and gentlemen, the next one is the Old Business Downtown Master Plan, and I am going to read you... I usually don't do a speech, but I'm going to do one now. I'm going to do something I don't usually do, and as I make a speech, I'm going to ask the council for consensus tonight. Now consensus purely states that the majority of the council agrees and supports the decision and the reason for making it. We've been having a hard time with this plan, and the one person that I can blame for this hard time is me, because I'm the only one that was here when we did it the last time. Forty years ago, we did this exact same thing. We, the DOT, wanted to pave downtown Graham, and they asked the city of Graham, what would you like to do as far as changes go? We had two factions going then. One was the mayor, Mayor Ryan, his wife Sarah Ryan, and a couple other people, and they wanted to turn the downtown into a park with a two-lane road going around the courthouse and all, no parking at all. And then you have... And then you had the other group on the other side of the fence, that was the merchants. They said if you did this, it would ruin their businesses. The exact same thing we're having right now. So they finally compromised a little bit, and they put these, I call them nightmarish planners uptown, which the city staff has to work on every week. Cars bump into them, and we have to repair them weekly. I remembered this, but I still let this go on. So with that, I apologize to all of you. It was, this is my fault that we've had this little discussion for this length of time. So what have we gained from this study? The first thing we've gained is a downtown survey plan that tells us where every fire hydrant is, every building is, every cutoff for the water lines are. So that survey, we can use for fixing our water lines and our sewer lines, which is our first intent in the first place. And the second thing we gained was we gained time. We gained time through the DOT to allow us to do these infrastructure repairs. So now I'm going to ask the council, now I just want to say this, I received a message from Wendy Kate's at last meeting, and she said, if y'all do all this infrastructure, you probably won't have the money to do any of the rest of it, and she was right. So there you go. So I'm going to ask the council for a consensus, and that's to put this plan to work, to seal this Pandora's box, and with a warning from forty years from now, when the council does this again, please don't open this box. My consensus states that we will end the discussion of the downtown small area plan, and we make changes to the downtown for one, fire and pedestrian safety, two, infrastructure needs, three, the ADA needs, and four, the DOT regulations. I'll give the council a couple of minutes to think about what I've said and for them to prepare their statements. If they want to say yes, that's fine. If they want to read a statement, fine. So you've got about two minutes of silence to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to say that, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that the most important thing to me about this plan, what began the whole conversation quite a while back, was water and sewer. I'm pleased. I'm happy that we're able to get water and sewer in front of the repaving of Highway 87. It was desperately needed. It's going to save the taxpayers a lot of money, and I think we've accomplished the most important goal that I feel like that this was trying to accomplish, and that is to make sure that we get that needed infrastructure in place. So I am okay and I'm supportive of leaving this tabled and moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Y'all need some more time? Griffin, how good evening.
I need a little bit of clarity on consensus of moving forward versus tabled. Your language was different than Lee's. What's...
I think right now, what I want, I'll read it again. My consensus states, "We will end this discussion of the downtown small area plan, only make changes at downtown for one, fire and pedestrian safety, two, infrastructure needs, three, the ADA, and four, the DOT regulations."
Within the existing plan?
No, this is, this is standing by itself as a consensus from the council. The plan will go in a box and put it on a shelf, waiting for some crazy person to open it again.
Unadopted.
Adopted.
I'm not going to be in favor of that. There's too many valuable things in this plan that links us and our progress with DOT. Saves hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think the $50,000 we've spent becomes waste. This is the part of government I didn't want to be a part of, a plan that's useless, that's in a box that we paid tens of thousands of dollars for. I'm not in support.
Okay. Melody, please.
Again, I go back to the main reason that we started all this, and it was the water sewer. However, I am not in favor of wasting cities' money of $50,000 that we put out to have this done. I am in favor of doing your water sewer. My concern is that a consensus is actually no legal action whatsoever. If we are going to table it, then I would make a motion that we table it, and I'm fine with that. I'm absolutely fine with that at this time. We do have a lot to do. It's going to take us quite a while to do water sewer, and I'm certainly in favor of that.
So you want me to add something into this consensus that says we will table the plan instead of putting it on a shelf?
Yeah.
I would say made a motion because consensus does nothing, absolutely nothing.
If it's tabled, it's still...
It's no legal action whatsoever.
Yeah, it still implies the plan is there. The water and sewer is part of that plan.
Right.
Some of the things you just mentioned could be part of the plan. Stormwater could be part of it. DOT is responsible for certain stormwater requirements when they initiate a repaving, so.
Streetscapes, pedestrian lanes, bumpouts, widened sidewalks, I mean, the things that we like. I think there's big traffic issues, parking issues that none of us like, but there's ways to trim this. There's ways that some of us have spent ninety or 120 days culling through this document, making lists. I've got sixty changes that have been requested of me by people I represent, and I'd love a chance to discuss those. We pushed to have all of us back here to have a discussion. I'd like to have that discussion, a work session, something in the future that allows us to adopt some form or fashion of a plan that partners us with DOT, saves hundreds of thousands of dollars in what's going on. Do I like what's in this document? The roundabouts, the taking South Main Street to Tulane's in front of Biscuitville? No, I don't. But there are, there are parts of this that are necessary.
And let me say too about the $50,000. That $50,000 just saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Simply said, just getting the water and sewer in will save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it was not a waste. By no means. That was the main goal from the very beginning.
I agree.
If discussion wants to occur for other streetscapes, I've always been receptive to that discussion.
Let me, let me point us back to the minutes of the last meeting as well. When we made a vote the last time, we actually pulled out water sewer, we made a vote. But in the minutes, it shows that we tabled all of this at that time. That means that at this point, there needs to be no other action.
That is correct.
We don't need a consensus because it's not legal, it's not binding. We made a legal consent, we made a legal motion at the last meeting.
We did.
To table it. It may come back at any time.
That's the problem. It may come back at any time.
Or never come back.
So these people have to show up every month from now?
It only has, only if it's advertised.
No.
Only if it's advertised.
Until we revise a draft that can be considered with an up or down plan, yes or no? Let's get a draft in front of us with the revisions we want and vote on a document. I'm fine with losing it. I'm fine with it. If I go down three, two, or four, one, I'm fine with losing it. I want a fair discussion. I want a chance at this partnership personally. That's just, I'm one of five.
All right. So it looks to me like we're two to two on this. That's what it looks like to me, because I say yes on the consensus. All right, with that being said...
Let me, let's go back to that. You're doing a consensus after we have already voted to table. So what is the point?
Well, you have to vote to remove it from the table. So there needs to be a vote to pull it from the table. If it doesn't, it stays there.
Right. That it's already been tabled.
You're making this hard on the citizens of Graham, extremely hard, because they're going to end up showing up. Look at this crowd that you've got here. They're going to show up every month.
Only if it's advertised for discussion.
I mean, I... They don't trust us now.
This does not, this does not have to go on the agenda.
I know it doesn't.
Once you table it, it's...
Let me take you back to Bill Cook Park. That was not on the agenda either. When they named Bill Cook Park, it was 11 o'clock at night, and there was nobody in the room except the council. They named it Bill Cook Park. I like Bill Cook. I have nothing against Bill Cook, but why do that and make these people not trust us?
Let's give it one month. Up or down, November? One more month. Let's get a revised document, do a work session in the meantime, get a plan that we can actually consider.
Well, we're two to two right now, so we've not done anything here. Okay. Good deal. We'll move on.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, the item remain tabled.
Okay. You don't have to do that. It's still tabled.
Well, if you don't pull it from the table, then it's better to keep it tabled and make that motion at this point.
Brian? If it's tabled last month, it's still tabled.
It is still tabled until somebody makes a motion to reconsider it.
So we can just leave it there with no motion?
Yeah, because all I was asking for was a consensus, so I think it's okay just to leave it there.
All right. Thank you for your listening.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion that we work to schedule a work session. One afternoon, look at this plan. The last meeting we had, well, I'll keep the motion short. I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a work session to consider the pages of this plan and a revised version we can vote on.
Since you didn't like my solution, I'll say yes. I'll second that. Find some way to do this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. All right, let's find us a date. Be advertised work session. So come up with a date.
Now?
Yes.
Thursdays and Fridays are best for me. I can make any day work for this. I would suggest a one o'clock meeting, planning on working the afternoon. Let's give you two more weeks of recovery, please. I'd look at the 22nd, 23rd, or 24th. We have, Darcy, do we have meetings any of those nights already for city staff?
24th is on a Thursday.
Uh huh.
Is that correct?
That's the City-County Association Dinner, actually, so we don't want to... I would look at Wednesday, the 22nd, or Wednesday, the 22nd, or Wednesday, the 23rd in the afternoon. Do we know if we have meetings?
The 22nd.
Darcy, do we... Sorry.
HRC meets when?
HRC meets next week. Planning Board meets the week after that. The 22nd and the 23rd were... There are no citywide meetings on either of those days.
And those are Tuesday and Wednesday?
The Tuesday, the 22nd, and Wednesday, the 23rd.
Correct.
I'm good.
I'm good either one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a work session for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019, for 1:00 PM in the afternoon.
Second.
In here.
Okay.
Well, I don't, should we go to the...
You going to fit all these people in there?
Get recorded.
Yeah, but we can record it here, too.
We'll just set tables up right here where the microphone is. We'll do it right there.
That, non-specific, I defer that to you.
Okay. All right. So I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. All right.
I do.
I'm sorry. I should have told you that. Okay, good deal. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next we're going to go to a quasi-judicial.
A procedural question.
Yes, sir.
With respect to the two motions that are made, absent a decision of some specificity at the work session that you proposed, back to Mr. Kimery's motion, will this item continue to be on the Old Business on the agenda, or is it not?
Let us work through the work session, and maybe we can come up with a solution that we can deal with and then put it on the Old Business next. Griffin was asking for one more month, and we allow one more month.
All right, but if nothing is agreed to that day, what is the status next month?
There's no way I could say, except tell you to stand by. I'm sorry. Come up and spend the afternoon with us. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we got B on Old Business, quasi-judicial public hearing. Nathan, you're taking care of this for us, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This was requested to be tabled by the applicant and then was not heard by the planning board. The planning board has not had an opportunity to make a recommendation, one way or the other, to the council, and therefore it's my recommendation that council take no action on the side of it and move on to the next.
Question for the staff. Start with you.
No questions, Mayor.
Griffin?
No, sir.
Melody?
No, sir.
Anybody from the floor want to speak on this?
If we allow individuals to speak, it's a quasi-judicial, so we'd have to open the evidentiary hearing to do so.
Okay. So let's talk about it among ourselves then. Do we, we all right with postponing this?
Yes, I say we keep this closed and keep it with the planning board. And it was a request by the applicant, I believe, as well? Okay.
Can I do this with a consensus, or do I need to... Then I make a motion that we postpone this for one month?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Next, we have Old Business, C, second reading, approve ordinance amendment in Chapter 12, offenses and miscellaneous provisions. Aaron, I think you're handling this for us, please.
Yes, sir. This item was brought before council last month to amend our nuisance abatement language as it pertains to junk debris removal. Our current methods to obtain compliance includes a per-day monetary citation, as well as there is a debris removal which requires a seven-day hold by the city. There was question last month of whether or not the city was required to hold onto junk debris for any amount of time. We did ask, you know, school of government, as well as check case studies to make sure that we were within our rights, and we were. The city does have the right to do so, and even in asking and researching on this, I was told that we're probably one of the very few that might still do this, and that we do open ourselves up for potential legal issues down the road if we were to remove individuals' items and store them, because how we store them also comes into play because they can then say that we damaged their property or something to that effect. With that being said, even though we are within our rights, talking with the city attorney staff, we do feel that it would still be a good idea to have a hold, so to speak, for the property owners so that we can in some way have a compromise. So instead of doing the thirty days and then hold it for seven, we're suggesting that within that thirty-day timeframe that there's a ten-day hold on the property. So we're not removing it. It's almost like a stay. The city allows the property owners or tenants, whoever, to handle the items before the city steps in and then remove it. So it's somewhat of a compromise. We did feel that there is some value to allowing the property owners to have the opportunity to remove the items prior to the city stepping in to remove it.
May I ask, this is the second reading. Did you make this compromise after the first reading?
Yes.
So that puts us back to the first reading. Is that not right?
No, because there was never a vote made on the first reading.
Did the language of the ordinance change?
The language did change.
Brian?
Now, that one I'm not sure of. It was read, I can't remember the exact discussion, but it had to do with the seven-day period.
I would feel more comfortable to make this the first reading.
Okay.
But what does the council think?
I agree. I agree. I think because the language has changed in the actual ordinance, and because of that change of... It's a new amendment at this point, and it's no longer reviewing the previous amendment. Yep, I agree.
With that being said, questions for staff. Melody, I'm sorry, you should...
No, not at this time.
Griffin?
Well, I was going to, and Nathan just reminded me, if you voted for oh, then it would pass.
Absolutely.
I guess that's what I was alluding to. It depends on how the vote goes.
Yeah.
For Brian O'Ryan, I guess there was a case that Burlington entered into that, was that reviewed? And does this cover what the concerns were there?
I don't want to speak incorrectly, but from what we looked into, that dealt more with the removal of actual structure and items within the structure.
Within it's, okay. All right. Aside from debris, or what's considered junk? No more questions?
All right. So we've got a ten-day hold within the thirty-day period after we issue a warning, correct?
Correct. With sentencing.
So I assume the last ten days of the thirty-day period will be the hold period?
That's correct.
At that ten-day period, is the zoning officer going to go out and take pictures of the actual debris? The reason I'm asking, let me just back this up a little bit. What happens if it gets added to within that ten-day period, and then they want another hold? How are we going to monitor that?
Well, from the conversations that I've had with our zoning official, we want to over-document. So beginning, when we go back out there on the, prior to the ten-day running out, of course, the start of the ten days, I should say, we also would want to go out there and document what's out there as well. So we definitely would have pictures, documentation of items that are out there.
So if we ever did clean up, they would know exactly what items has been there for ten days and wouldn't touch anything other than those items and could verify if anything's been thrown on top of the pile.
Based on the pictures taken, I would, I would hope that they're vivid enough that we can see what's been on it.
I can just see someone saying that something was added, and then not having the proper grace period, so I just want to make sure that we have good...
No, we, we would be very specific.
Pictures, and make sure nothing's added, so we're not liable for hauling off anyone's stuff.
We would be very specific.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Does everybody understand what we're doing? We're trying, trying to shorten the, the period down where we're picking up somebody else's trash. We're trying to stop us from having to hold it for 30 days, which is a unusual period. It gets a little bit rough after that length of time. So, with that being said, I need a motion, and look at page 40 on your agenda, and you will see the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amendment to Chapter 12, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 3, nuisances of the code of ordinances to amend requirement of the city to store removed junk debris.
Thank you, ma'am, I need a second.
Second.
Thanks, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose likewise. We do have a supermajority, so that would take care of the second reading. Alright, next we have recommendations from the planning board. A, a public hearing, AM 1904 boutique shops. And, uh, Nathan, you're handling this for us, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an application by Janet Eckelberger, who has applied for an amendment to our development ordinance to clarify boutique shops, and then to permit them as used by right in neighborhood business zones. The planning board did recommend approval with one condition, uh, one change to the text, that it be limited into 2,000 square feet, and not be up to 5,000 square feet.
Question for staff, Griffin, start with you, please.
Um, no, Mayor.
Lee, any questions?
I do, I do. So, the 5,000 square foot, how was that determined?
It was based on what was in Ms. Eckelberger's application.
So, it was a request from the applicant to put, to look at 5,000 square feet as the maximum amount? Do we have any idea, because looking at B3 zoned buildings around the city, do we have any idea what kind of average square footage we're looking at? And how did the planning board come up with 2,000?
Ms. Eckelberger indicated that her structure was around 1,500 square feet, and so the 2,000 would be in excess of what her request was for. Most of the B3 lots are fairly small, although, um, you could likely get a 5,000 square-foot building onto some of them.
Yeah. But it's safe to say that we have some B3 buildings now that are over 2,000 square feet.
I would say it was very likely.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Melody, please.
No, that was my question. Thank you.
Griffin, questions? With that being said, anybody from the floor want to speak on this? Janet, no? You asked for it, come on up here. If you would, let us have your name and address, please, ma'am.
Janet Eckelberger, 604 Washington Street in Graham. Good evening, Mayor, and welcome back.
Thank you, ma'am.
And members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to present this evening. I'm here to request a consideration for a development ordinance change, and mostly the enhancement of the definition in the ordinances, because currently it is not defined at all. And the term boutique shops is, uh, can be, I guess, taken all kinds of different ways by, by different people. So, currently boutique shops are, are permitted in zone B1, B2, and I1, with only a special use for O1 and B3. And I'm here to recommend that the special use be omitted for B3, and it become a permitted use, and clarify the definition of boutique shops for this. There's a ton of focus right now on downtown Graham, and, uh, I, I think that we also need to consider the activation of the neighborhood business areas as well. The term boutique refers to a small shop dealing in fashionable clothing or accessories, or a small exclusive producer or business that offers highly specialized services or products. It's really the, the definition of the term boutique. Um, and that definition defines a growing number of entrepreneurs and small businesses currently getting started in and around Alamance County. And in order to welcome them to Graham, and encourage them to activate our neighborhood spaces, I believe that this change and clarification is necessary. As Nathan said, there are currently 27 of these B3 zoned lots in Graham. Many of them have convenience stores, many of them have vacant buildings, and many of them are simply vacant. And, um, the 2035 plan says that we want to sort of activate our neighborhoods, and make walkable places, and encourage bakeries, cafes, and small local food stores, and small restaurants promoting local food in these areas, so that our neighborhoods become destinations for the people that are there as well. Of course, those businesses should operate within B3 guidelines, which would be, you know, their operating hours, deliveries, make sure they have parking, and all that. So, that is really what I'm here to suggest, is that we just take it out of a special use, and we open that up, so it's easier for, uh, you know, food grown in Alamance County, people producing things locally, uh, to open up small businesses in our neighborhoods.
Introduce yourself to the three kids, and tell them this is a way to change things in the world. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this? If not, then we will close the public hearing, and we'll talk among ourselves. What does everybody think?
I'm a little concerned about 2,000 square feet, I think it's a little restrictive. I'm gonna be honest with you, I've looked at some buildings around in B3 zones, and there's some buildings out there that's 2,500, 3,500 square feet. That would make, really, that look like to be, you know, neighborhood stores at one time. And I would hate to restrict some of the stores that are in neighborhoods, providing this service, a little neighborhood store, um, by looking at just 2,000 square feet.
What would you suggest?
Like to meet in the middle somewhere, around 3,500.
I like that, 5,000 seems high.
Yeah, it does, me too. I don't want to make too much impact into a neighborhood, but I don't want to restrict buildings that could be reused.
So, let's come up with a number, but...
3,500?
3,500.
I'm fine with that.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm gonna write that in here. Anything else?
No, sir.
Alright, then I want to move you to page 52 in your agenda, and remember the 3,500 number as you make your motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the text amendment be approved, that the text amendment be approved with the 3,500 square-foot maximum, that the text amendment is consistent with the Graham 2035 comprehensive plan, and that this action is reasonable, and in the public interest, for the following reasons. Whoop. I'm sorry, I just lost my place. Sorry, Mayor.
Alright, it's page 52.
That the 2035 plan and strategy 2.1.5 and 2.3.1, as well as policy 2.1.6 and 2.3.2 recommends increasing small business opportunities within Graham.
Sir, I need a second.
Second.
Thank y'all. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. Good deal. Next, we have a public hearing, CR 1901, South Main Townhouses application by Villan Incorporated, 32 townhomes. Let's see here, Nathan, you've got this also?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to rezone the subject property from CR to CR, that is conditional rezoning to conditio... Excuse me, conditional residential to conditional residential. Originally, the rezoning permitted 32 townhomes with a private street. The proposed rezoning also has 32 townhomes with a proposed public street. If rezoned, the property will also have to comply with the updated stormwater regulations. The property is currently vacant.
Questions for the staff, Griffin, please.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love an opinion from our, our manager, actually, on, um, the private versus public use of the street. Can you offer a perspective on the value to the city, the value to taxpayers, versus are we paying for something that we shouldn't be?
Depends on your school following, depends on what happens down the road. Generally speaking, streets are, even though they're listed in our books as assets, they're really liabilities. They require maintenance, uh, servicing, stormwater, uh, resurfacing, patching potholes, the like. If they're public streets from the outset, we have standards for construction, and they must meet those standards. So, they're gonna be constructed to give us a 15- to 20-year life. Private street may or may not be constructed to the same standards, and may not generate that type of life. With, uh, just a few townhomes, um, that could be quite a burden for the homeowners association to maintain and collect dues to support the long-term maintenance of a street. So, in many cases, when there's private infrastructure down the road, those individuals, especially if they're within a municipal limit, will come to the governing bodies and request that you take over ownership of those streets and maintenance, in perpetuity. But I'm of the opinion, I would rather get it right from the beginning, rather than 15 years from now, when the street is in disrepair, or 20 years, be faced with a substandard street, and have to rebuild it from the bottom up. That's, that's my take on it.
Great, no more questions?
I will disclaimer this, and say that this property is not within the city limits of Graham currently.
Right.
So, that is a subsequent action that we will have to consider, in affording maintenance of streets, whether or not the city council would be willing to annex the property. Questions, Lee?
I do, so Nathan, Nathan, just to be clear, this is a use by right with a private road for them to move forward with this, because the conditional zoning stays with the property, correct?
Yes, sir, they could build the 32 townhomes on there, they could walk in and pull permits tomorrow if they wanted to do so.
There's a sewer easement at the back of this property, is that sewer easement gonna be used?
The applicant proposed a couple of things to, um, dress up and make the, uh, project more appealing for the city. One of those was, at their expense, to install a sidewalk along South Main Street. It is outside of the overlay, so there wasn't a requirement for that. Another is to, um, install a sewer easement on the east side of the property, where there could be future sewer connections, just due to the draw in that area, but there's not currently a sewer line there.
Right. So, when this was approved, this obviously doesn't have two means of aggress, and it's above 25 units, so it's currently not looking to put in two means of aggress. Is DOT determined that that would not be feasible for that area? Or, how is it, how is that going to be handled?
So, the original approval had only one entrance. There are some topography concerns in that area, and there's, um, road alignment questions. So, it may be that DOT wouldn't allow two connections as close together as those are.
Right.
That was attempted to be ameliorated with the connection, so that although there was one, um, tight entry at the beginning, you then went quickly to having, uh, the, the loop such that you could access on the north side or the south side. There may be some other considerations that come out during the TRC review. Maybe the road looks more like Elm Street, where it's a, uh, 20 feet with an island, and then 20 feet, so that if you locked up one side, you didn't lock up both.
And, and talk briefly, too, about private versus public road from a safety standpoint. Frankie, you mentioned, you know, just from putting in a road that is gonna be sustainable for the future, but also from a safety standpoint, if we ever have to bring emergency equipment in there, dealing with a private road that may not be up to our standards, what kind of, what kind of situation that could involve?
I, I would hate to speculate too much, but I have seen instances where large trucks have been, the, the wheels are stuck in the dirt beneath the pavement, as the pavement crumbled, for whatever reason, over a storm drain or an improper sewer installation.
I have as well, thank you, yeah.
Melody, questions, please?
I do. Nathan, these are consistent, uh, or it's all contingent, actually, on TRCs. A lot of the things we just talked about are contingent on TRC's approval of all of these, correct?
With the exception of, if it's denied, the private street would have a separate standard. For example, the townhomes off of Raspberry Run, um, has a private street, and the city, um, did some inspecting out there of, I believe it's public water and sewer, but the street, uh, does not meet the city standards.
Okay. So, all we're doing tonight is just approving, uh, what we see on the table right now. It still needs to go to DOT. Is that actually in the recommendation? In the motion?
It, the, the TRC has its... Because it's in the development ordinance, it is, it is able to do so through the TRC anyway.
Okay, so we don't need to include that tonight?
It, it may be that the largest concern would be the, the entry that Councilmember Kimery was mentioning, so if, if it would, wanted to be included, that, um, the access was, uh, approved by DOT prior to the construction of any... Prior to construction on the site, that, that may be a good recommended, a good condition for the rezoning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nathan, I appreciate it. Alright. By show of hands, who wants to speak about this? Uh-oh, nobody. Then good. What we're really discussing here, they can do this by right, which means it would stay a private street, and they can go ahead and do the 32 townhomes. If we do something with it and make it a city street, then the odds are we would annex it and change the way that street looks, the, how that street handles. But it also means that the fire chiefs got along a ride outside the city limits. So, you gotta look at that also. So, with that being said, if nobody wants to speak on this, we will close the public hearing, and we'll just come up, please, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. The, um, uh, question was raised about it not being in the city limits.
Yes, sir.
What is the status, if you make it a public road, and you, you agree to this rezoning, does it ultimately have to become into the city?
No, it does not.
You're saying yes, you're saying...
No, it does not have to.
Does it have to, but it's likely.
Yeah.
We would still have to evaluate our ability to serve it with our other services, fire, sanitation, all those things, that will lead us to make a recommendation to the council as to whether or not it makes sense for it to be the city or not.
It's, it's not a subject that would be kind of concurrent with this decision?
No, because currently it says private, so they couldn't develop it with public roads, and public could be NCDOT.
That's correct.
As exists on Mallard Creek, for example, directly to the south, or it could be city public streets. It specifies right now, private.
That's correct. NCDOT is, is the other public entity, uh, in the Graham area that could, um, bestow road design standards on the developer. So, it could be a city street, or it could be NCDOT, either one. Either of the public bodies will, um, will tell them what standards to build it to, and usually that's tied to a life expectancy.
And are those standards similar? Graham and DOT?
I, I would hate to guess.
Chip's not here, we knew we needed him.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else want to speak on this? With that being said, we'll close the public hearing, we'll talk about it among ourselves. Y'all, I personally say leave the thing alone. I mean, it puts the fire, fire department way out there for one little spot that we might not be able to handle.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I can understand that reasoning there.
And also, you also put the garbage truck riding a long distance if it came inside the city.
And I don't see, through an annexation, if they come back to us and want city streets, we can reevaluate it when we annex them the property.
Anexation is a separate matter.
It's a whole separate matter.
Separate matter.
So, we can move forward and let them look at DOT options for the street. But for us to put a public street in there, it's going to have to be annexed in. I would not ever support putting a street in there and maintaining it if you're not paying tax dollars to keep it up. So, it would have to go DOT, in my opinion, as a vote on this council. They would either have to go as DOT street, and just be outside the city and be in the ETJ, or they come into the city, and we can make that approval when necessary, when they ask for a request to be annexed in.
I mean, I think for fire and safety and sanitation, they're already going past this to Mallard Creek, too.
They are, yeah.
I, I...
Actually, no.
No? Explain.
Mallard Creek is not within the city limits. We do provide water and sewer services to Mallard Creek, but it is not within...
Okay.
So, would this be the farthest parcel out, 87?
It would.
If annexed?
Yeah. The, the next closest parcel would be immediately north, where you see the R12 zoning. It's also a townhouse development.
Yeah.
That's the extent that we provide city services.
Say we deny this request, could they then come for annexation, and then re-request a look, a look at the zoning after annexation? Is this the, is this the logical process for, for what it is?
The annexation process, the assumption of the street liability, those are questions that... that, that can be answered later. Now we are talking about, does this make sense? Is this consistent with our comprehensive plan? Is this zoning, this, this particular legislative matter related to zoning, does this make sense and we approve it? The condition is the public streets, but those public streets don't necessarily have to be the city.
No.
They can be NCDOT.
Correct.
Like Mallard Creek.
I mean, I tend to think I like it and like control over the road if we can build it to our standards out of the gate, as opposed, and it's going to be subject to all the TRC standards and that, that filter, I'm sorry, I'm looking over there. I kind of like it.
And we still have to annex it in.
Right.
We can make decisions at that point whether this is the proper direction to go with the annexation. If they decide to go that route.
That's true. I mean, we can at that point. I, I agree that we should, if we're going to look at it, we need to, to do our standard versus someone else's standard. I'd be much more comfortable with that. Do we need to go, we already have services out, they're actually further north. I wouldn't want to maintain, go ahead.
I will mention that the alignment of the street and the townhomes within this development provide, the sewer comes, it discharges to the, to 87. If I'm not mistaken, the prior zoning and arrangement of the homes, the sewer went out the back to the east of the property, which would be another sewer line that the city would eventually have to maintain. So it would be preferred to utilize existing lines rather than to create new outfall lines that we have to mow, maintain and inspect.
Can, can we ask about the expense of annexation, is that?
If they asked to be annexed? Right now, they, they would have to ask to be annexed.
Yeah. But I mean, conversationally, can I ask Frankie what we're looking at?
Yeah.
What, how expensive would it be to annex this parcel?
We typically don't prejudice zoning decision with the cost of annexation.
Okay.
But with development, particularly residential development, unless it's at a super high density, they're going to take more in services than they provide in tax revenue. It's expensive to build and maintain streets, water lines, visit their doorstep, visit their curb once a week with garbage trucks. Every time the fire department rolls, it's $2,000. So, and the average residential home, if they call the fire department one time, that's probably taking their tax, tax revenue for two or three years. So low-dense residential development, generally speaking, unless we're building McMansions on small lots, they are generally taking more in service than they're paying.
So it seems to me that the logical question would be, it, that it costs the city, it's going to cost the city money to have this, but the intangible value of 32, 32 additional households to the economic engines of whatever it is, is, is what we're weighing.
Can do a financial analysis. I'm not prepared to give you any results tonight, but I can just speak to you generally about land uses and their implication on your services and, and the contribution to the tax rolls.
This original request for, for the CR, do we know how old that was? How long has this been dormant?
It was approved by city council on December 5th of 2006.
So it sat there for 13 years with no action?
I will also say that this is a conditional rezoning and so unlike a straight rezoning, conditions may be applied to it. For example, it must annex into the city in order to construct this. It must have the city standard street in order to be viable, or city standard or NCDOT standard, whichever is stricter. Those conditions could be applied to this, whereas they couldn't be applied to a straight rezoning.
Yeah.
But to just to clarify, in Mallard Creek, those, all we are doing, those streets are not ours, they are DOT and we are simply providing services. What about the R12s that are north of this property? Is that the same?
Those are city streets.
Yeah.
Those are city streets.
In fact, I remember early in my career in Graham, they inquired as to why they did not have streetlights. And I said, well, you're due streetlights. So we installed streetlights. So that, those are our city streets. The streets in Mallard Creek, I'm going to assume they are DOT streets. They are not city streets. There are a good number of private streets and what we call paper streets in and around Graham. They, their intention was to be offered and dedicated to the public, but it never happened.
And so Frankie, explain to the, the benefit of water and sewer being to that property and how it can develop in the form that it's wanting to be developed now, is the only way that it can be by providing water and sewer? And talk about Mallard Creek and what the cost is for water and sewer to be provided to Mallard Creek because they are charged at a higher rate.
They are charged a higher rate for not being in the city. We have a rate structure that charges a higher rate for water and then sewer surcharge for sewer services. So they do pay a higher rate.
But the properties north of us were not annexed, even though we have city streets and they're using city services.
Yes, they were. That project is within the city limits. Mallard Creek is not. This project that, that's up for discussion tonight is in between. And it is, would be the southernmost portion of the city, should we annex it. We would need to do some investigation. There are several issues when we, before we make a recommendation of annexation. Normally, we don't give you the fiscal impact because you probably don't want to know it. But on the other hand, we do analyze the run distance for our fire department. We analyze if it's non-contiguous like this has the potential to be. Does it meet the state standard for, are we exceeding the standard for non-contiguous annexation? And if not, is this a non-contiguous annexation that would encumber so much of our percentage that we would not be able to annex somewhere else should, should a petition come forward?
By non-contiguous to the what?
Non-contiguous would be a portion of the city, in this case, that is not adjacent to the primary corporate limits. It's an island.
Yeah. So, and let me say something to your concern too, and I understand exactly your concern and that is just leave it alone. One of the big advantages that Nathan brought up and the reason I ask him about this is moving the sewer from the back where there is a sewer line as a use by right, they could move forward and put that sewer line in that would fall back on us for long-term maintenance instead of going to the front, which is what they propose, and using an existing sewer line. So that's going to be hugely beneficial, is the reason that I want to move forward with something and then explore the options on the annexation when it comes forward.
Could we make the motion contingent upon annexation?
Oh, absolutely.
I like that, I see, I like that much better. Make it, go ahead and make it contingent upon their, their coming in and being annexed.
You're going to lose me on that one.
Yeah, I don't want to say that we would approve it. I don't, you know, and it's okay if, if we approve this and they move the sewer to the front and use an existing sewer line that we don't have to maintain, or we're currently maintaining. And then in the future, not request that it be annexed, but give them the option to look at a DOT street. As long as they got water and sewer, they can get the concentration.
You can say petition to annex.
Yeah.
Application for. There's a difference between you must annex and a petition to annex.
I agree.
Because you can turn down the petition.
Yeah.
Right.
But we could approve this and they could move forward and never come back to us and put a DOT, DOT street in and move the sewer to the front, which would be, would be fine, I think, and satisfy most concerns.
I would prefer we do that.
I could live with that, as long as you don't put it contingent to.
Right, I don't want it dependent on an annexation request.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as we get that to the front.
Okay, with that being said, is everybody finished?
Mm-hmm.
Then I move you to page 68 on your agenda. Oop, I'm wrong.
59.
59 on the agenda. And ask for a motion and remember, the petition to annex, please remember that as you make your motion.
As a request? Mr. Mayor, I move that the application be approved, but contingent upon a petition for annexation? We okay with that?
No. I'd be fine if it never came back as an annexation, just as a private street, a DOT street. As long as we approve it and they move the sewer to the front and we let them go to TRC, that's just where I'm at.
Should I withdraw the motion for further conversation or?
It's up to you. I let them decide on what they think they need to move forward with as far as they want to come back to the city for annexation, or they just want to go to DOT and try to do a DOT street.
Let me withdraw my motion first, I need clarity.
That makes sense, or?
Clarity on that.
So what is, what is, our only advantage to that process, Lou, would be that we would get the water sewer to the front?
Exactly, absolutely, absolutely. And then if they come back and, and put in an annexation request, we can explore whether it's beneficial, whether it's the right fit, really explore a lot of things at that point. But at least they can move forward with the development and they could just use a DOT street or a private street. And they moved the sewer to the front and we approved the rezoning.
As worded in the.
Does that sound accurate?
With the single thing is that they would have to do either, they'd either have to meet DOT standards or the city standards, they could not do a private street after labeling it.
Right, after we go, okay, gotcha, yeah.
Okay.
Which is good, that, that protects us from moving emergency vehicles in there.
That needs to be in the motion, Nathan.
No, if it's a public street, it's, it, you, the council could make the motion that it meet the stricter of the two standards, NCDOT or the city of Graham, but regardless, if it is approved tonight, it shall meet a public street standard.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application be approved, that the application is consistent with the 20, Graham 2035 comprehensive plan and that the action is reasonable in the public interest for, for applicable policies 3.3.2, 5.1.1 and 4.3.1.
Yeah, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. Okay. All right, next we go to C, public hearing, RZ 1904, South Main, Windsor, application by David Michaels. Nathan, you handling this also?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to rezone the subject property from R18 and R12 to R9. The property is currently vacant, wooded and under cultivation.
All right, questions for the staff? I'll start with Mayor Protean.
Thank you, Mayor. So Nathan, use by right in an R9, from a dwelling standpoint, what is the only use by right in, as far as a dwelling in an R9?
The only use by right in an R9 is the same as in the R18 with the, I believe the only exception is that a farm is used by right in R18 and is not, ill, and large animal veterinarian, which is not allowed in R9.
So R9, only single-family homes are allowed?
That's correct.
Okay. And?
Which is clearly defined in our ordinance as not townhomes, not duplexes, just single-family detached homes.
It's got to be single-family homes in an R9 rezoning. And also too, in an R9 rezoning, it looks as though this particular rezoning, no, I'm, I'm going to pull that question, thank you. I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Melody, please.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't, at this time either. Okay. Does anyone from the floor want to speak on this? Come up, sir. Give me your name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor, my name is, and members of council, my name is David Michaels. My address is 5603 New Garden Village Drive in Greensboro. I'm employed with Windsor Homes and I'm here to speak on behalf and in favor of this proposal tonight and I appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Welcome, sir.
And Nathan has a PowerPoint presentation that I have provided for, for your benefit as well as the folks in attendance. And so first of all, we have been here before, council before with previous subdivision. A little bit about Windsor, if you don't know, we started in 2001, local triad base. We built homes throughout the triad from Winston-Salem to Mabon and also have an operation in coastal North Carolina. Most recently, we have developed and are building in the Forks of Alamance community, which is over on Rogers Road. And our goal really is to provide quality homes that do meet the, the needs of the market. And I think we've just demonstrated in the Forks of Alamance that there is a strong demand for the product that we are providing there. And I'll speak a little bit more about that in just a moment. This request is before you, is a 52-acre parcel. There are three separate property owners involved in this, two of those are here tonight. Currently zoned R12 and R18. We are requesting an R9 zoning. It's not a conditional use request, it's just a straight R9 zoning. We have done a sketch plan and looked at that. It's not before you tonight, but I would expect to be able to propose about 130 homes or on a, on a gross acre, that's about two and a half homes per acre on this property. There are some streams on this site, there are some wetlands on this site, there's about 15 acres of floodplain or more on this site. There's a utility easement that crosses this, a Duke Power right-of-way. And so it does create some challenge in terms of the amount of buildable area that's on this 52 acres. If you figured that you took those 15 acres out, that leaves 37, we would be at a net density of about three and a half homes per acre. There are two existing streets that adjoin this property that I presume were stubbed there for future connections. One of those is Param Road and that is a DOT maintained road. And then also Wildwood Drive, which is a city of Graham street. We have had NCDOT take a look at our sketch on an informal basis. This is not going to TRC or anything at this point. And they have given us some comments about the permitting that would be required in terms of a driveway permit onto Param Road, any encroachment agreements. And they would look closely at the traffic volumes that are expected out, even all the way out to Highway 87 in terms of potentially some turn lanes, as well as some potential improvements that might be required to Param Road and Shannon Road, which would eventually connect there. All of that would come up during a TRC review. Once, if we get through this successfully, then we will be filing a subdivision plan and an annexation request for the property to move forward. Water and sewer is available at the site. It does utilize existing lines. It does meet with Graham's comprehensive land use plan. And as I mentioned, we would propose to annex into Graham at a later date. Next slide, please. The Forks of Alamance, just to give you a little history, that was a similar zoning request that was approved in 2016. That was 101 lots on about 60 acres, a little less gross density overall, but it had more floodplain, 29 acres on that, so about half that site was in floodplain. In that neighborhood, we started 46 homes, we've, we've closed 31 of those homes at the price range you can see there and an average of value of what those homes have been. It would be our intent basically to take that same product and move it over to this particular site and continue on with that particular product. Next slide shows you the existing zoning, the, the site is outlined in blue. You've got some R12 and some R18 on this property. And we are asking for R9, there is R9, you can see in the lower left-hand corner, I believe that's the Rogers Springs neighborhood, which does adjoin the Forks of Alamance. Next slide gives you a representation of the amount of floodplain that's on this site. Through permitting, we could possibly encroach into portions of that with some additional grading and raising of the, the flood elevation up, but that would all have to go through the permitting process as well. The next slide shows you, we have had a consultant go on this property and evaluate the site for streams and wetlands. The dark blue lines are perennial streams and those would be regulated by the state DEQ in terms of crossing those streams, as well as any impact to wetlands will be regulated by the Corps of Engineers. So we understand that process, we've been through it before and as part of our site plan, we would have to address that with those folks in terms of permitting. The next slide shows the, the comprehensive plan. This site is near the bottom, it's kind of highlighted in the, the dark blue in the center. The suburban residential classification is what you call for in this area and predominantly single-family detached homes. And an appropriate density for that land use is a three to six dwelling units per acre. So on a net basis, we are just barely above that, that three units per acre. In summary, this is consistent with your land use plan. We do feel like it's a reasonable use for this property. We have a proven track record at the Forks of Alamance that, and have established a good relationship with staff in terms of moving through the approval process and the development process and, and the construction process. It does utilize existing water and sewer lines that have been, you know, money invested in those in the past, so future roads would provide connectivity to the surrounding neighborhoods and certainly DOT is going to be involved in overseeing part of that process. process, as well as staff through the TRC review. That's basically what I have. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them now or later. I also have, Tom Hall is here with Windsor Homes, company president, and he would be happy to answer anything that I might not be able to.
Hi, Mr. Michaels. Thank you, sir. Melody, any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
You referenced future roads. What are the, what are the main points you're looking at for egress and is it broad?
Point or not, but Param, if you're familiar with that, comes in at the northeast corner of the property. That's, that's, that street is, I'm not sure if it's paved all the way to the property line, but, you know, we would have to connect to the right-of-way and continue out. And then on the western side, Wildwood Drive is a city street that, again, I'm not sure it's totally paved up to the property line, but we would make connection to that right-of-way.
On the cul-de-sac there, that's in the sketch?
Cul-de-sac, again, that, if you go back to the streams, you're generally limited to about 150 feet of stream impact. And I feel like with the crossing that we would make it Wildwood, that that would more or less use up the permitting capacity for a stream-impact crossing. I really don't know that that's going to provide much additional benefit, because it's just a few houses down from the other connection point. Anybody moving onto Wildwood is, is going to be moving through the same street network that if you came in on that cul-de-sac. The topography is very difficult right there, there's a steep slope, and it just didn't make a whole lot of sense for us, I don't think, to try to make that connection.
Okay. So we're saying one point of egress?
Two points.
On the cul-de-sac or not? It sounded like you back there.
Param Road and Wildwood.
Okay.
To be clear, council member, there is a cul-de-sac that's on the southwestern side here, that is not being anticipated to connect to due to the floodplain and the streams and whatnot. What, what their attempt to view, what I believe they're applying for.
Thompson Road?
Um, no, I think it's...
Wildwood Drive.
It's, it's not. It's Broad, Broadway, Broad Acres.
Broadway.
Broadway. Broadway Drive goes north, south here, and it ends in a cul-de-sac. Wildwood Lane does not have a cul-de-sac, it just is a stub.
It's just a stub. I thought that was Broadway.
Okay, okay. No more questions?
Yes. So this is a unique piece of property with, it's got a lot of flood zone area, obviously, as you mentioned. I think you mentioned approximately 15 acres is flood zone. Was there any thought, we have, we have a unique opportunity in the development ordinance in an R12 open space?
Yes, sir.
Rezoning. Open, open space can only be, can only be verified with an approved plat, but R12 with, with that option available with 15 acres of flood zone, is that an option that you'd consider?
Well, I looked at that in your ordinance, and since we do have two different zones here, we have an R12 and an R18, we'd still have to go through a rezoning process to take it down to an R12. If we did that, we could conceivably go down to a 10,000 square-foot lot with the appropriate open space set aside. We're asking for a 9,000 square-foot lot minimum. So conceivably, we would probably lose 10 lots or 10% of the lots, if you just look at it on an area basis. So you may be talking 12 homes from a, from a total impact. I just don't see that that's, I mean, yes, it's a viable, it's something to consider, but we feel more comfortable with the R9.
Sure.
And that's what we've done over at Forks of Alamance, it's worked well for us, and so we would...
Especially as much as you're losing in the flood zone as well.
That's right. It is a restricted property because of that. So we're trying to consolidate the use up on the usable parts.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Anyone else? Now, anyone of the owners here wants to speak? Martin, come up.
I'm here. Do you have a question?
Okay. Now, everybody that wants to speak, raise your hand. All right. What we'll do is we'll take them one at a time. When you come up, give us your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, and let us know what you think. So I'll start on the right-hand side, on the front row. Is anybody there on your row? You want to speak? Come up, please. Sarah, it's good to see you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Sarah Burnett. I live at 1923 Broadway Drive in Graham. I'm the last house before the cul-de-sac. Broadway Drive can, I have been notified in writing that there will be probably, if this goes through, 200 more vehicles per day on Broadway Drive, and probably three, four trips a day per vehicle. Broadway Drive is very dangerous right now. I have almost hit two children in the last, during the summer. They play in the street, they ride their tricycles and scooters. Anyway, Broadway Drive cannot absorb 200 more vehicles a day. When there's a landscaping truck vehicle or an extra truck on the street, we have to stop. We can't pass. You can't put three vehicles wide because they're parked on both sides. You can't pass on Broadway Drive. Matter of fact, we use, while we'll go to the bridge and use Wildwood Lane more than we do probably drive. But now that you develop back there, Wildwood Lane's getting just as bad as Broadway Drive. It's very, very dangerous. And the stop sign at Wildwood Lane means nothing. Nobody ever stops. And coming over the hill, people aren't always doing 35, which is way too fast for Broadway Drive. It should be 20 miles an hour. It's going to be a death for, for too long. It's gonna happen. There've been some near misses already. And also, as far as, let's say on that, in my opinion, it's just for the safety of our residents. I've been in there 24 years. I've seen a lot of changes. This was the first one that's really bothered me. My child gets killed, it's gonna be too late. And it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. The other thing I have to say is, go for the water and sewer, but just leave downtown Graham. It's downtown Graham.
Thank you, sir.
We love it.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Anybody else on that row? Would you let me have your name and address, please, sir?
My name is Neil Gann. I live at 1923 Broadway Drive, down at the Dead End section. I'm a graduate of Northwestern University Traffic Investigation. My concern about this project is safety. I think with 4 million miles behind me, I know a little bit about safety. What you're gonna do is create major traffic jams if this goes through, because the traffic on Broadway Drive now is ferocious at times. Because these guys, and I have no problem with people trying to make a living, but these landscaping people, mowers, they pull a vehicle up as close to the curb as they can, but because of the way the cars are parked, their trailers are sticking out in the middle of the road. I don't know how many times that I've almost hit a trailer with a car coming meeting me. It's dangerous. You take Rogers Road, coming from town out Rogers Road, I can turn a blinker light on way back at the pond on my left, that I'm gonna turn left. And invariably, I have to keep going because somebody don't pay attention and is gonna hit me in the rear. I'm moved to keep them getting hit in the rear. Wildwood Lane is basically the same thing as Broadway Drive. It's very curvy and hilly. I have, I don't know how many times here lately, went to leave, going to town or something, people come down Wildwood, they don't pay no attention to the sign, they don't look to the right to see if there's any traffic coming. I've had to slide and make right turns to keep them hitting. If there's something not done about widening Wildwood Lane and Broadway Drive before this project goes into effect, you're gonna be faced with lawsuits because of the fact I'll almost predict it, that within six months, if these streets are not widened, you're gonna have a fatality at Broadway Drive and Wildwood Lane. Because already on Wildwood, you've got a project, houses being built. That's gonna throw extra traffic on Wildwood going back and forth either way, because they're gonna, some of them are gonna use Broadway Drive trying to get from waiting at Rogers Road and Wildwood. It's a confused cotton-picking mess until you take and make these people widen these streets and put traffic lights in there. Now, I'm, I'm not kidding.
Thank you, Mr. Gann, your time's up.
That's, that's what I feel, and I want that. Say thank you for allowing me to express my opinion.
Yes, sir. Anybody on the next row? Would have to be the one all the way on the inside, wouldn't it? Just have your name and address, please.
Marty Jones, I live on 1701 Param Drive. I've had a concern with this. Param Drive was, is a small, quiet neighborhood with about 17, 18 homes on it. I've been there 40 years, and most of the people that have moved in the neighborhood over the last three to four years tell us the reason we came here. It's a quiet neighborhood, no traffic, no flow, kids can ride their bikes, they can get out and take their kids, walk their dogs, whatever. But if you put this project through Param Drive, not only is it gonna destroy that neighborhood, you're gonna destroy the traffic flow going out to 87, because he's gonna come from that area up to Param Drive, which is an intersection, he's gotta make a right-hand turn and go out to Main Street. And most of the time during the day, anywhere from 6:30 to 8:30, quarter to nine, if you want to get out on 87, you're gonna sit there. The same thing in the afternoons. And if, if that's the only exit that he has to come out of that area, then I don't see how you're gonna get emergency vehicles in and out, especially coming in with construction trucks tearing up the road that we, as members who've been there for years, had to pay the DOT, we asked for it to be re, from gravel to pave, and it met the standards for that neighborhood, not this many cars that go through will be coming out of that one entrance. I don't see how you can justify having one exit coming out of, if he says he's gonna put two and a half houses per acre, what are we looking at, 100, 100 to 130 houses? You're looking at 200 and 300 cars a day coming out of one little area there. And then the DOT says, well, we'll have to do a study, and you're gonna end up with traffic backed up coming out of Graham, coming that way out of Graham. If you put a traffic like that, you're gonna black it back up to Hershey's Barbecue. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Let us have your name and address, ma'am.
Yes. My name is Nikki Ellis. I live at 1738 Param Drive, which is the very last house on Param Drive, which actually comes up to the edge of the Windsor properties. I voiced my concerns at the planning board. When you come out of Shannon Drive, it's in a curve. In the mornings, you have River Mill, you have southern traffic coming out, you have to almost just gas it, just not to get creamed. Our road can't comfortably fit two cars passing. So the street issue, the safety, the developer mentioned something about putting turning lanes. I'm not sure if he was talking about Palmside or Wildwood, but that's not gonna solve the problem. I don't think a traffic light can be put in a curve, so I don't know what's gonna happen. I'm not looking forward to having 300-plus cars coming up and down my road, and possibly giving up half of my front yard to make the road wider to accommodate these. I think there needs to be another entrance/exit as well. So I ask you guys to please reconsider zoning to not be an R9.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else on that row? The next row with Roy. Let us have your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Steve. Steve Anderson on 224 West Shannon Drive. I'm, my street runs into, intersects Param. Thank you very much for this opportunity, Mayor Peterman and city council members. I do not think this is a good idea. I request distinctly and directly that we do not change the rezoning. I'm sorry, but this is not a good idea. I realize that somebody stands to gain, to make a lot of money out of this, but this is too much for our neighborhood, and we do ask that you turn this down. It would change our streets, and the traffic would be horrendous, and I need to get out in the morning and come back in the evening. The density is too high. I would even vote against the R12. So I request that you keep the R18 as it is, and we also ask that you don't annex our area. We haven't given the City of Graham any trouble. We don't have any crime there. We are good neighbors. We all know each other in that neighborhood, and we, we appreciate what Graham does for us, but we'd like to keep it that way, and we do not want excess traffic in there. So I, I request that you do not change the zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anybody else on Roy's row? Let me have your name and address, sir.
Marty Fuller, 205 West Shannon Drive. And I just request that you not change it. There is such a peaceful, hey, Lee, peaceful little neighborhood, and it will become a miniature freeway. And if anybody that has driven in there and visited there, I welcome you to come down, come down, see me, Lee, and we'll see it. Make sure it's quarter to eight in the morning, and I'll show you what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. On the next row.
How are you, sir?
My name's Nathan Glass. I'm at 1526 Stonegate Drive. My concerns for this development, development is good, don't get me wrong. Overdevelopment is bad. And right now, we're starting to see too much development of people, residents going onto Rogers Road. And with this new development, there'll be more traffic going on Rogers Road. Rogers Road needs an upgrade. It's overdue. There's no sidewalks. I've seen kids almost get hit by cars trying to walk to the park, South Graham Park, and that's in the city limits. So if you choose to do this project or let it go through, you also need to develop Rogers Road to make it more safer. It's listed as being 40 miles per hour. I've seen cars do 55, 60. I know that police, the sheriffs, try to monitor the traffic, but it's like a Speedway. Thank you.
Mr. Glass, just information-wise, Rogers Road is a DOT road. Any kind of improvements would have to go through them. The sidewalk down there that you're talking about, I think we had put in when the development came down off of, off of Broad, not Broad, it was a Darrell Drive, that neighborhood. That's when we ran that sidewalk up to the city park. But it is a DOT road.
But it's not safe. So if you're going through this project, you're gonna have... But it's not safe. So, if you're going through this project, you're gonna have accidents, someone getting hurt.
I, I agree with you. That is, is a tough road, and especially during a snow or something like that, because it's the one we get most phone calls on, and we don't even foul it. Because it is a DOT street.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let's see, anybody else in his row, Mr. Glass's row? Ricky Hall's row? Lisa, your row? Mr. Pickard, anybody on your row? And the very last row. Against the wall. All right, we'll go back here to the front on Daniel's row. Richard? Anybody on that row other than Richard? Richard, let us have your name and address, sir.
Yes, sir. Richard Shovlin. I live at five-ten Wildwood Lane. I was fortunate enough to buy that piece of property from Luther Schaffner when there was no homes between the five-hundred block to the townhomes right before Rogers Road. I was the first one on the hill. Enjoyed that neighborhood completely. Uh, I've had the pleasure of having Griffin in the neighborhood, nice, quiet. But as developments continue, the roads have gotten more dangerous. I've got a fifteen-and-a-half-year-old daughter who's driving, so we, I live like right on the hill. So, when we back out of there in the mornings, inevitably, there's, there's always like a potential for an accident. So, if we increase this, if we increase the traffic flow without having some type of a study of an impact. Uh, I think we're gonna be creating more unsafe roads that we don't need. Uh, I do believe that some of the parking can be policed, that we have on Broad Acres or, excuse me, yeah, that Broad Acres. It could be policed, you know, the, cars have been out there for months, the flat tires need to be taken, they need to be pulled off. That would help make that Broad Acres safer. Also, uh, the traffic from Perron and from Highway eighty-seven, if you have to find an, an escape route, which is, I've heard that Perron, Perrham is only one route. They're considering tying it straight to eighty-seven as well. And if that's the case, then you know what's gonna happen. People from eighty-seven will cut through and, and, and heading towards Rogers Road. It, it'll just create, it'll create a huge safety problem for the existing neighbors. I'm all for development. But I think we ought to table this until we can understand the safety impact of the traffic for Broad Acres. Broad Acres has a lot of elderly folks. And now, the new development, we're getting younger people. It's, it's getting to be a, a pretty good mix, but it's, it, I agree with some of them, I, on the safety end of it, that the roads are congested during certain periods of the day. And anything I ask you to do is consider table it until we can get a further study on the safety end.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on that row? Ronnie James's row. Ronnie, it's good to see you, sir.
My name's Ron James, sixteen nineteen Wedgewood Drive in Graham, and Roger Road's got enough traffic. Do we need to call DOT and complain, or since you said that is, I didn't know it was a DOT road?
I would call them if I lived there.
Okay, it's gonna happen.
Every day.
You can bet on it. Uh, South Main Street is too crowded. My wife has to go to River Mill and carry kids, grandkids, and pick them up. She has to go down South Main and do a U-turn there in front of Bethany to try to come back, because you can't turn left off Main into River Mill. More traffic will make it worse. As said, I agree with the progress, but at what its expense do you have progress? Broad Acres have been over there for over fifty-five years. It's a children's neighborhood. Traffic will take all that away. And as I'm keep reading and hearing, it's children in our future. We need to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anyone else on that row? Then the next row, please. No one on the next row? Oh, there she comes. All right. Welcome, ma'am. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Alice Van Tine. I'm at eighteen thirty-one Broadway Drive.
Repeat that.
Eighteen thirty-one Broadway.
No, no, your last name?
Van Tine.
Okay, thank you.
And my husband and I moved into Broad Acres about twenty-five years ago. The main reason was, it was a nice, quiet community. A lot of our neighbors were around our same age, so of course, as the years have progressed, we've seen a turnover in population, and we're getting younger families with children, which means safety is my biggest concern. When it was just us and older neighbors around us, it didn't matter if people were parking on the street and you had to weave in and out to get up to the main road. But if you're gonna add several hundred cars a day to a street that you can't always pass on because there's too many cars parked on the side and children are out playing, I think it becomes a big safety issue, and I think they need to address some of those before they even consider opening up Wildwood Lane all the way.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else on her row? Van Tine's row. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mitz Adamson-Kine. I live at eighteen thirty-four Broadway Drive. Um, I'm three houses up from Wildwood, and I live on the left side. I live on the hill. When I come home to turn into my driveway, I have to stop to make sure there's nobody coming. So, I'm not having a head on. So, I work in Raleigh. It's a lot of traffic there. When I come home, when I get off the highway. My knuckles are starting to get bad colors. I get home, I take off my wig, I toss it, and I'm happy. It's a mature neighborhood. It's very quiet, and that is the reason why I chose this neighborhood. So, I would like to ask if the builder, are there no other communities that he could choose to build all these little, small houses? Has he, can he tell us if the value for a property is gonna be reduced based on all these homes he's getting rid of, or he's trying to build? We have a very tight-knit community. We all look out for each other. Um, we all family-oriented, and with all these new development, I'm all about improvement, development moving into the future. However, if it's gonna destroy established neighborhood, then I think we should table it. I respectfully ask that you not grant this builder the, um. I suffer from PTSD, so him doing that kinda just freaks me out. No question. I, I respectfully request that you not grant this builder, this builder the permission to just ruin her community.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else on that row? On the next row, please. I see you, ma'am.
My name is Hannah Basin. I live at eighteen thirty-eight Broadway Drive in Graham. And I am two homes up from, um, I guess where Wildwood will connect to that, um, neighborhood. I have three kids, and we are some of the kids that they're talking about that loves to play in the road and ride their bikes, and I literally, when I play with my children in the road, I have to put, um, children at play signs in the middle of the road. Um, and that's just, and I'm out there with them. People, there's already, on any given day, you can come down, um, Broadway, and there's, you can't, you have to stop, um, in, in several sections just to be able to to get like around to where you need to go. And, um, pulling out of my driveway, when I'm backing out of my driveway, um, I have to pause and make sure, like, really make sure that no one's coming over that hill going fifty miles an hour. When I was here for the, I think it was the planning, um, I had told them that you can literally stand in my front yard sometimes in the mornings and feel wind come up from people just, so my fear is that it's gonna be a freeway. My kids also go to River Mill, and, um, so I know the eighty-seven struggle too. If, I, I have, I think it's gonna be a mess, um, and I do think it's already dangerous enough. We already have zero control over that road. It's, it's awful, um, and I just think it's gonna make it even worse.
Thank you, Ms. Basin.
Thank you.
Anybody else in Ms. Basin's row? In the next row after her? How are you?
Welcome back, mayor. It's good to see you back. Jill Bullis, five hundred Wildwood Lane, twenty-one years. We built our house there for the reason of a quiet, nice, simple neighborhood. Um, one child's in college now, but I have a fifteen-year-old who also, like Hannah Basin spoke, is one of the kids that rides their skateboards in the road and rides their bike in the road, and every time he says, "Mom, I'm going for a ride around the block," I literally am on pins and needles till he gets back. He's been ran off the road by a car before. He had a near miss just several weeks ago where the car actually stopped and said, "Are you okay?" So, that was good. The first run off the road was not, they did, they just ran him off the road and kept going. Really concerned about the younger kids, even though I'm concerned mostly about my own. Uh, he'll be driving soon, which also concerns me because like everyone else has spoke, there are very few times you can go down Wildwood in one straight in your lane to your destination. You are stopping, you're waiting, you're weaving. That is a walking neighborhood. People walk, people run. It is dangerous. I worked at River Mill for seven years. There was an accident on River Mill the first day of school this year. You know, there's lots of issues. It does not need to be thirty-five on Wildwood Lane or Broad, Broadway Drive. It's Wildwood Lane, by the way. You need to correct your slides. It's, okay, um, and I just, um, I'm not in favor of any kind of through fare coming in front of our street, and I'm certainly not in favor of losing three hundred feet of our front yard. Thank you.
Jill, before you leave.
Yes.
Uh, I introduce you to Nathan. If you wanna change the speed limit in your neighborhood, come up and talk to them, and all you have to do is, is petition it with the rest of your neighbors. And, uh, you can come up, and we would vote on it. Just, I mean, I agree, twenty miles an hour is plenty fast enough on Wildwood. It really is.
If you're going thirty-five on Wildwood, you're going way too fast.
And that's what people need to know. In your neighborhood, you can petition the council to change the speed limit.
Okay.
Other than that, the sign at the city limit said it's thirty-five anywhere in the city unless posted otherwise.
Okay.
Okay?
Can you also get the, the children at play signs up and all?
No, you cannot. What that does is give, it puts the liability on the city of Graham. If we put a children at play sign out there, it gives them the right to play in the street, and if they get hit by a car, then all of a sudden the liability goes to us.
I understand. Okay. Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate that. I'm sure we can make this happen.
I look forward to it.
Anybody else on Jill's row?
I'm Hayden Garrison. I live at nineteen thirty-three Broadway Drive, actually the cul-de-sac at the back of the neighborhood. So, just a few things I'd like to touch on, kinda echoing what everybody else has said. First, the existing infrastructure, you know, I can see how from a developmental standpoint, it could be a strength, but at the same time, as everybody's hit on, I think it is also a weakness. Broad Acres is a lynchpin to the Graham community. It's known as a nice, quiet neighborhood. With that, as everybody said, there's cars parked on the side of the road. There's a lot of children playing. Since being there for a year, I've already seen a couple parked cars get hit due to that same circumstance that people have already mentioned. With that, the other thing I think I would mention, off of Wildwood Lane, you already have another development that's underway, and right there where Palmer Drive intersects. So, you've already got more traffic funneling in there, and then you're gonna add another whole avenue. I think that just basically increases the likelihood of potential for more wrecks and accidents. The second thing that, and I know is accounted for here, but it's a little bit of a concern to me, being at the cul-de-sac, I've seen some of the flooding and stuff firsthand. Actually, by profession, I'm an insurance appraiser and adjuster, so I've seen the devastation and been employed on duties to actually see what happens when flooding impacts people. Last year, when the hurricane hit in September, it was actually to the point, it flooded all the way back to eighty-seven. Was able to ride a kayak down what that little creek is, all the way to the creek and stick a paddle down to where you couldn't even touch the bottom. So, I, I think that's, you know, one thing to be said there. Uh, the other thing is, you know, our current flood models, they're as accurate as they can be. But at the same time, too, we've had a one thou, one-in-one-thousand-year flood event and one-in-one-five-hundred-year flood event the past two years. You know, eight trillion gallons of water were dumped last year. So, Florence was pretty bad. Lastly, this big thing for me, I've grown up on a farm country, conservation, like say, I'm all for capitalism, but at the same time, too, I understand the importance of conserving the land. Graham is a community that I feel like is a focus on the greater good. It's a small town, but it's got a lot of potential, and that's why we moved here. We like the community. We like what it offers. We enjoy seeing all kinds of stuff. We've seen deer, foxes, coyotes, raccoons, possums, squirrels, hawks, owls, rare and endangered species like pileated woodpeckers in our backyard, and I just think the current environment that we have, it really facilitates a refuge for these current animals and other areas where really, as other people have said, it's shrinking. They're not gonna have anywhere to go. I think that could also pose an impact on wildlife in the area, and I'd like to see that conserved if it's all possible, and those efforts put to other areas in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Anyone else on Mr. Garrison's row? In the row behind him? Good to see you, sir.
Name's Richard Arnold, two thirty-two West Shannon Drive in Graham. I apologize for my congestion and my accent. I'm not a Graham native. I'm transplanted here from the beautiful mountains of Appalachian to the west. But I do call Graham home. Uh, I, I love, I love it here. I shop here. I live here. I intend to stay here until I go to the final call, which I hope is a long time away, but the way I feel right now, I'm not entirely sure. That being said, uh, reason we moved here was, um, was, reason we moved here is for what we have in Graham, in our neighborhood. I won't belabor the points and repeat what everyone else has said. But people come to Graham for what we have. To change that without taking a long-term look, I think is a mistake. I encourage the members of the Senate and your eminence, uh, to take, come, as Mark said, come on our way six-thirty to nine-thirty in the morning. That curve there at the antique shop can be problematic at best. So, uh, I, the future's gonna happen, but I would not, I would like to see it not happen at the, uh, at the destruction of what we currently have. All right?
Thanks, sir.
That's all I have to say. I concede the rest of my time. Thank you so much.
Anybody else on Mr. Arnold's row? How are you?
Well, thank you. My name is Patty Allen. I live at two-six-five West Shannon Drive. I'm here to ask the city council not to approve RZ nineteen oh five requests from Windsor Homes of Greensboro with developers Schaffner, Faust, and Williamson. I'm not opposed to development. I'm opposed to development that unreasonably and dramatically changes lives, and in the case of the Perron Drive neighborhood, irreparably devastates the lives of those who bought homes understanding the adjacent R eighteen zoning. The planning board recommended approval of RZ nineteen oh five noting alignment with three specific items out of over seventy in the Graham twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. None of these three items is met by RZ nineteen oh five. The two planning board members who voted against recommendation are the only ETJ representatives, and RZ nineteen oh five is in the ETJ. Goal, goal three-point-two of the comprehensive plan, dense and interconnected transportation network under which the first cited network under which the first cited policy is located, states Graham's road network will be highly connected with short walkable blocks and multiple pathways to any single destination. RZ nineteen oh five does not meet the qualify, qualification of getting any citizen to any single destination in the city of Graham via short walkable blocks and multiple pathways. RZ nineteen oh five is located over two miles from this council chamber and is without sidewalks and crossing lights at most intersections into town. Policy three point two point one, promote interconnectivity within residential and commercial developments. RZ nineteen oh five does not interconnect any residential and commercial developments nor will ever likely connect any residential and commercial developments. However, it will serve to connect Highway eighty-seven and Rogers Road, further endangering current and prospective residents. Policy three point three point two, reduce roadway lane widths in order to slow down vehicular traffic in areas where bicycle and pedestrian traffic is encouraged. The current road width of Param Drive stepped off is eighteen feet. It will not support any additional traffic beyond its current use. As it exists now, West Shannon Drive barely allows safe turns off of and onto Highway eighty-seven due to a blind curve. The roadways would have to be widened even further, burdening the citizens and not at all in compliance with limiting roadway width. Strategy four point three point one, promote development of efficient land use patterns to allow continued quality and efficiency of water systems, discourage the extension of water service into areas that are not most suitable for development. Approximately one-third of RZ nineteen oh five acreage is in floodplain that leads directly into Little Alamance Creek. The remaining thirty-seven acres will hold well over one hundred homes with R-nine zoning. The extension of city water services and lawn treatments in combination with very challenging topography of the acreage are likely to contribute to significant runoff despite abatements which could further burden the water quality of Little Alamance Creek leading into the Ha River. RZ nineteen oh five is not environmentally suitable for development. All three specifics of the planning board's recommendation for approval as aligned with the comprehensive plan are questionable. The planning board's lack of consideration of the dramatic and devastating impact on the citizens as evidenced by no traffic study, no environmental studies, and very short notice to only the adjacent landowners, which are few, are all before approving the request gravely concerns me. I respectfully ask the city council to vote no to RZ nineteen oh five.
Thank you, ma'am. Very well put. Anybody else in Mrs. Allen's row? Mrs. Allen's row? Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, I think the city council's taking a cue from the Baptist church. Y'all know how to keep the heat up in here without finding a thermostat.
That's what we learned from them.
Oh, yes, sir.
You played basketball at Duke, right?
They get hot there, too. It's hot everywhere. Mike Allen, two sixty-five West Shannon Drive. You know, one hundred and eighty seconds, pretty tight timeline standing before you on a short notice that we've received, making appeal to have some serious consideration of what is gonna be a serious impact if this R-nine is approved. The reason we're here is because it doesn't conform. You know, Mr. Michaels, I'll stipulate, he's a gentleman, but as he stated himself, he's here to provide a product. We're here to provide some stability and continuity in the community that we live. That naturally puts us at odds with his desires. We're not opposed to development. I think there may be some that are, and I don't think many of us are not. But the reason this hasn't been developed is at the end of the line. It's there where, where the land falls off sharply. It meets the final drainage where the little alamance actually grows up and it's a little bit bigger before it hits the big alamance and then dumps into the Ha River. So to add the burden of an R-nine development at the very end of the line, I think it would be unreasonable and possibly irresponsible. We keep referencing this twenty thirty-five plan. I was here for the special meeting, I guess it was last week, and I heard plans referred to as simply that, plans. Just because there's a yellow, a brown, a green shade on the map doesn't reveal the details we have to deal with. I mean, yes, maybe from the city's view, there's a, there's a revenue base that could be had by pulling this in. Somebody's weighed the odds. There's got a sewer line runs across the back of my property and some other folks that feeds this land, but is that the best use of our resources? Why not have, if we're gonna develop it, stay with the R-eighteen, have a few houses in there, maybe some people like that suburban living? This is, in some of the shades I saw, we described traditional neighborhoods and suburban residential neighborhoods. R-nine does not conjure any notion or images of suburban or traditional neighborhoods. The reason, again, that there is not a connection between Broad Acres and this area that we're talking about is because of the natural barriers. We're gonna have to water, the wetlands and the floodplain's gonna be, have to be breached, dealt with, which also means that the numbers, density per house is what looks good in the, in the big picture, but with a third of the project being in a floodplain and potentially exposed to more encroachment restrictions, it's gonna naturally force everything to the slope, which pushes it up towards the Param Drive, Shannon Drive area. That neighborhood was there before Broad Acres was there, and it was dirt roads. And it's not built for anything close to what we're talking about. Broad Acres, which again is a jewel, I think, in the city's crown of residential neighborhoods, i- is gonna be turned upside down over this project. They've sat there and accepted some developments in development. And yes, Windsor Homes is doing a similar development on Rogers Road, but it's not placing the burden on the surrounding area that this proposal would. So it's isolated to the Rogers Road area. That's a DOT question, as we've learned tonight, and so there'll, there'll be some areas hopefully to deal with that. But it's not impinging on all the other neighborhoods around it, absence of that one road. There's no way with the proposal. And meanwhile, some of the development land actually has direct access to eighty-seven, but they're not using that in the plan. They've drawn the lines in such a way to send it through a neighborhood that was built with no consideration for this type of development. And then it will actually be orphaned outside of the city while these other folks have the city overlay, if that's what you want. And so does that mean the city trucks are gonna drive through the neighborhood to go take care of the, the other place that you packed in and sandwiched an R-nine against two suburban residential, traditional neighborhoods that don't deserve to be connected and overburdened with the kind of development we're talking about? Again, not against development, but we ask that you say no to the R-nine request.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Anybody else on that row? Anybody else on Mr. Allen's row? Anybody on the back row? Oh, come on, young lady. Thank you. That's not the back row, though, is it? I skipped the whole row.
Now you can include him, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Susan Hyder. I live at three oh two Thompson Road in Broad Acres. My mom and dad, Frank, Adama, and Asha, bought their house in the early eighties. My children have been raised in there, and my great-grandchildren come to see me as well. They love it. They say they're coming to the country. Main concern is the zoning has to stay as is. There is no way this neighborhood, not only will you devalue our homes, but you create chaos within the system, and people would not want to live in that type of neighborhood. And only that. There's one other animal we have in the woods, and that is turtles and turkeys as well. And maybe that's something we can put into the new plan for Graham, is to have a place where children can connect with nature in regards to the stream and wetlands and check out, have walking trails and so forth. So please, please don't do this to our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Hyder. Anyone on Mrs. Hyder's row? Then I'll go to the back row. Anybody on the back row? Come up, sir, ma'am.
My name is Danielle King, and I live at eighteen forty-two Broadway Drive. My home is gonna be directly impacted. I just purchased here three weeks ago. Closed out my house before I knew any of this was going on, so I'm not very happy. We have been homeowners in the city of Graham for twelve years. I was an emergency dispatcher here. I worked with your chief coal. I love the city of Graham. Instead of taking my three hundred thousand dollars and going to the county and building two homes, because we're now taking care of my ailing parents, I chose to go into an established neighborhood that was quiet. I live at the corner of Broadway and Wildwood. This road will go between my property. It's gonna go right through the middle of it. I talked to Nathan the other day. He answered some questions for me. I understand that there was an easement there. I didn't think anybody was gonna build there because part of that property, mine, does go on the other side where the floodplain is. That road does not handle traffic well. That was a little bit of a concern when we purchased there, but I drive a big truck. I go slow down the road and we don't park in the roadway. There's no way that that road can handle that traffic. You don't have any speed bumps. So when you come down, I went down Wildwood all the way just the other day because I'm a new resident. I hadn't come down that way. I mean, you can do fifty miles an hour like nothing. There's no speed bumps. There's families. I mean, these, we're taxpayers. You know, your revenue comes from us, too. And we like this city. That neighborhood's amazing. Within twenty-four hours, I had already met a neighbor who came over and introduced herself. Within a week, I knew five of my neighbors. They all came to my house. It's a very close-knit community. There are a lot of children, and we want, we have three acres. So two of our lots are actually in the county. If you go, the road's gonna go right between them. One of them goes back, and we're gonna leave those, we're not doing anything to them because there's wildlife that lives back there. And that's the reason why we purchased there instead of going deeper into the city or buying a fancy new custom home, which probably would have been better to take care of my ailing father. But we didn't. We decided to go into the established neighborhood. And the day that we did that, a couple of days later, a sign showed up. So it wasn't even public knowledge. My realtor couldn't find any information that this was even coming. I didn't even have the chance to decide whether to spend that much money and be the corner of the freeway. And I really would encourage you, for the safety of that neighborhood, to say no to this. And it's not the development. I, I know you have to develop. I know you need homes. They pay taxes. This is the way the city works. But where the roads are gonna connect is gonna take Rogers Road all the way to eighty-seven. Our neighborhood's gonna be dangerous. And I have a child still living at home. Hannah lives next door to me. Her children play. They're always outside. And we want to keep it that way, that they can go outside without being run over. So I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Ms. King. Anybody else on the back row? Did we miss anybody? Come up, Chris, if you wanna speak. Have your name and address, Chris, please.
Chris Faust, eighteen fifty-one South Main Street, Graham. Graham's going through some growing pains. These people are high rate. The Shannon Drive and Palm Drive, I don't know if that connection either, but fire code says we gotta have it. Broadway, Broad Acres is a development. They live in a development. We've heard all the complaints about how bad it is to live in there, the traffic and all. Even at R-eighteen, I'm sure Mike said he was in favor of development, but if you show hands, ninety percent of them wouldn't want one house built back there. More or less, if I've done the math right, R-eighteen would probably be ninety houses. You're gonna have, you're gonna have pushback with everything. But this is Graham, and it is growing. So, but you know, Mr. Allen, he's affected more than anybody other than me, other than the traffic. I mean, we're surrounded. It's my house. It's where I live. I was approached by the neighbor landowner who was gonna sell. My hands were tied. Now, you may not think so, but at least with this company here that I've dealt with before, I had a little control. We know they're gonna do a good job, but Graham's going through growing pains, and I, I'm not gonna say what I said in plain, but I mean, because Booney put it in the paper, but y'all have a good time.
Come up, sir.
Tom Hall, fifty-six oh three New Garden Village Drive in Greensboro, and I am president and part owner of Windsor Homes. I'm proud to be a part of the Graham community and what we've done at Forks of Alamance, and we have built thousands of houses in hundreds of neighborhoods. And we would like to consider ourselves, and I think our track record would prove that we are responsible and we are sensitive to the neighbors' needs. We heard a lot about traffic. We hear about traffic every single time we go to a neighborhood, and we are sensitive. I know that through a site plan, there will be comments from the city and the DOT in reviewing the site plan and traffic patterns. We'll abide by those, try to make it as safe as it can be. This is a growing area. It desperately needs housing. What we're asking for is very much in keeping with what was approved for Forks of Alamance and very much what was approved for Sugar Community right down the street. I think the reason this hasn't been developed previously is because the landowners didn't have an interest in selling, and now they do. And growth is gonna continue to come, and it's a good thing for the city, and we're proud to be a part of it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then we'll talk about it among ourselves. So y'all just hold on just a minute. Let's see here. We had, I'll go over what I think the concerns were. Sarah Burnett, of course, traffic, and she said we want twenty mile an hour speed limit. Mr. Gann, safety of Broadway and landscapers. Mark Jones, peaceful neighborhood and the traffic count was a problem for him. Mr. Nikki Ellis, Mrs. Nikki Ellis, Palm Drive traffic and Shannon Drive traffic. Steve Anderson, Shannon Drive traffic and too high density. Marty Fuller, too peaceful, and traffic is a concern again. Nathan Glass, Stone Gate is over development on, especially for Rogers Road. Richard Shevlin lives on Wildwood. He's got a fifteen-and-a-half daughter, fifteen-and-a-half-year-old daughter. He's got enough problems. Sorry, Rich. Ronnie James lives on Wedgewood, and he's especially concerned with River Mill and the traffic count, but he's okay with development. Alice Van Teen, she's been in Broad Acres for twenty-five years. Safety is her main concern. Now, Mix, I'm sorry, the last name escaped me, but she, trafficking, she says it's a nice neighborhood, and she loves to come home and put her feet up and take her wig off. Hannah Basin, safety for her kids, traffic concerns, and of course, River Mill. Jill Bullis worked at River Mill, so she knows how hard it is down there. Wildwood Lane for twenty-four years and traffic concerns. Mr. Hayden Garrison, he echoes what everybody else said, except he added the parked cars and the flooding at the cul-de-sac and the wildlife that he enjoys. Richard Arnold, what he has is great in his neighborhood, and he would love to keep it that way. Patty Allen, not opposed to development, but very prepared statement, and the blind curve at Shannon was one of her concerns. Mike Allen does not, thinks it does not conform and is not opposed to development. R-nine at the end of the line is just not a good use, and the floodplain concerns. Susan Hyder, not pleased with the zoning, and she's concerned with the wildlife, the turkeys and the turtles especially. Danielle King, just moved here. I'm sorry, your realtor should have told you that this was going on. I would be highly upset with the realtor. And Chris Faust spoke, and Graham is growing and has very little control if he hadn't have gone to Windsor Homes. And Mr. Tom Hall from Windsor Homes, he said he would make it as safe as it can be, and they were on their best development. Okay. So we've got, closed our public hearing, and we're gonna talk about it among ourselves. So what does everybody think?
Mayor, I'd like to say something, if I may.
Please.
One thing, and I wanna bring up all the concerns and appreciate everyone coming out and expressing those concerns or your thoughts on this, on this development. The one thing that, that I was gonna mention, though, is, is obviously there's fifteen acres that's in the flood zone, but there's also fifteen acres that's already R-twelve. There's, the remaining acres is already R-eighteen, so as a use by right, this land could be developed tomorrow with no approval from this council. So something is going to happen and could happen right now. So we're really only talking about a small portion of the R-eighteen if we look at the R-twelve as an overall rezoning. The concerns with traffic, and I understand those concerns greatly, it would be, it would be fantastic if we could spend the kind of money and developers could spend money upfront that it would cost to put in traffic surveys and to study this. But before we adopt a subdivision plat, which will have to come back in front of this council, all those studies will be in place. Traffic will be evaluated, and all the changes and improvements will have to be approved on that subdivision plat. So all those studies occur after the rezoning, after they know they can move forward, at least to the next step. So I truly understand all the concerns. I understand the traffic concerns and the safety concerns. So I truly understand all the concerns. I understand the traffic concerns and the safety concerns. The only thing that concerns me is maybe the concentration. Something is going to happen and it could happen right now without our approval. So if we can find a good fit and someone who's going to put a good product there that's going to be friendly to the neighborhood and provide the safety precautions that I feel like they will provide with all the studies that will have to take place, then I think we need to be very conscientious of what we have in front of us.
Anyone else?
Yeah. And first I'll state, as Richard said, I'm intimately familiar with the neighborhood. We sold our house a year ago because of one of the developments that came to Rogers Road. Not the Forks of Almants, but the one in the pocket that Wildwood is already handling the traffic load. Now, there's another artery that's about to be opened onto Rogers Road from that. But this area has really been punished. That area where we lived for 11 years. I ran it a couple of times a week, less than I should have. But I'm familiar with the streets, the traffic, the parking on Broadway. I was up and down that street many, many times. And what I would say is that unlike the forks, this has two points of egress into existing functional established neighborhoods. I voted against Lacy Acres 2, 3 months ago for a very similar reason. It goes into an annexed City of Graham neighborhood. As I said, an established neighborhood, and then on the other end to an ETJ section that we don't control, that people, we have not annexed, so I just have trouble with that fact, that it's bookended by two different things. And then it doesn't have its own egress onto a Rogers or something like that. I like infill when it's done smart. I like smart growth, as I've said on Lacy Acres, but I think this is a consistent project with what that tried to do. And it just didn't make a lot of sense on a lot of fronts. I would consider the R-12, although Mr. Shevlin and several others made great points that I had not thought about. I would abuse that cut through to 87, leaving my home. That will happen from Rogers to 87. So that concerns me. But then you go to property rights of the owners of these parcels and their desire to develop things that have been in their families and established for years. So I see both sides of this. I would probably consider an R-12 or an R-15. I'm against an R-9.
Elliot, please.
I agree. You know, I think there are excellent points to this. I think that the traffic on Rogers Road in general is becoming tough. I think Griffin has good points about two coming through the neighborhoods are a problem. However, I also, it is a fact, there is going to be something built. And we need to try to make the right choices possible. You're not going to get away with nothing ever happening there any longer. Things are changing and something is going to go and something can go immediately. So the key is to try to grab hold and do the best planning that we possibly can. A lot of the concerns that we've heard tonight should be taken up within TRC if approval is made. A lot of your concerns are valid with traffic and safety. A lot of those concerns are actually met when you go into a TRC, the Technical Review Committee, all of those things. The water runoff, the Hall River. I was the director of Parks and Recreation for 21 years here and the Hall River project was actually begun by the city of Graham and by me. And so I'm very favorable to the Hall River and what happens to that. But again, that is one of the things that happens with the TRC, is their job to care for our waters and streamways and our buffer systems.
I'd like to talk to Mr. Michaels again. Mr. Michaels, where was? Tell me what our downtime or down would be on, you said that we would lose 10% if we went to R-12. Would the company survive at that? I know the company would.
Yeah, I think we would probably survive. You know, I haven't looked at a layout under R-12. I don't know exactly what the final lot count would be. I don't know exactly the final lot count under this proposal. I do have a pretty educated guess from a skilled engineer who's put a sketch plan together and looked at it. Again, you're losing 10% or so, and so it's a very incremental adjustment in the number of lots and the number of cars and the traffic that would connect onto these existing streets. It's unfortunate that, you know, there are only two points of access to this site. But I have dealt with the DOT. I've dealt with TRC. And I'm confident that they are going to make decisions that affect the ultimate availability of this site that are in the best interests of the public. And, you know, we are going to have to abide by that if we want to move forward. You will have a chance to review that if this is approved, that we would have to come back with that subdivision plan. You would have an opportunity to comment on that and I guess make some adjustments or suggestions at that time. We would probably have less lots, but it would be an incremental number. And if I'm going to say it's, you know, R-12, under the open space provision, allows you to go down to a 10,000 square foot lot. R-9, as we've requested, it allows a minimum of a 9,000 square foot lot. So it's about 1,000 feet difference. It's a thousand feet difference in terms of the minimum standards. That may be 10% if you look at it just on the raw numbers, so.
You can do it by right.
But part of this is R-18.
I know, a big portion you can't.
Yeah, R-12.
What I'm hearing from my council is you're fixing to get a no on this, which would set you back six months. Is that right?
That is correct for the same request.
With the same request. So is there a way we can do a compromise here? And let's say.
I don't know what the legalities are. I mean, it's been advertised as an R-9.
We can make the change. We can make the change.
I'm just asking, would you be willing to go to a larger lot, knowing that you?
I'd probably want to speak to Mr. Hall for just a minute.
I need to stand up anyway.
Okay.
Let's adjourn to, not adjourn, but let's take about 10 minutes till 9:30. How about that?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Do you want to mute?
If we get seated, we'll start over again and see where the guys got up to here. Have I got everybody? There you go. What do you think, Mr. Michaels?
I appreciate the council making a suggestion that we reconsider this as an R-12 zoning, which would mean there is an existing R-12 parcel, and then what's R-18 would be reduced from that down to an R-12. We prefer the R-9 for a couple provisions in the ordinance. Lots are a little bit smaller, incrementally smaller. There are some setback provisions that do not adjust when you use the open space provision to allow you to drop from a 12,000 down to a 10. So we have some concern about that, and that's something that we would hopefully be able to address with the subdivision plan and discussions with staff about the ordinance as it's written. Having said all that, and knowing that we still have to come back for a subdivision plan that is going to make or break ultimately the use on this, I think we would favorably consider your suggestion, and we would offer to modify the zoning request from an R-9 to an R-12.
All right, sir. If you'll wait just one second. Frankie, would you figure out a way to write that up?
I could just make it into a motion.
Change it from R-9 to R-12.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you being able to do this with us. All right. So everybody understand what we're trying to do here? Does the floor understand what we're doing? They have the right to build at R-12 now half of the project. Right now, he's fixing to change it to where the whole project will be R-12, which is larger lots, and still go ahead and have a build-out. Yes, sir. Mr. Allen. I agree, but we're not going to be able to keep it at R-18. There's pressure to use this property, and we're getting a pretty good compromise. I think by them, they're giving up 10% of their profits, and we're going to end up with a pretty nice subdivision, I believe. If we rule on R-12, the R-9 is out the window.
But the R-18 will be eliminated without much discussion.
All right. All right. Let's hold this down now. Can't everybody be talking from the audience? If you're going to speak, you have to come up to the front because everything is recorded. Well, I've heard everything he said, but I appreciate it, but it's not recorded. We're trying to do a compromise here. We're listening to what you're saying, but somebody has the right to build on this property. Not within the city limits of Graham. We don't allow R-18 in the city limits of Graham. It's not... To get water and sewer to it, it would be in the city limits. It has to be in the city limits. Sure. You're going to speak for everybody because we're going to end this here in just a second. Matter of fact, we've already ended the public hearing.
And I appreciate you giving me another opportunity because I don't believe what you just said is correct because you did point out that the subdivision right below us, Mallard Creek, receives water and sewer, but it is not in the city of Graham. You also pointed out there are other similar subdivisions like that. We're not opposed to development.
Do you know the development, the size of Mallard Creek?
I am very familiar with that. I have friends that live there.
You want to have that zoning?
I do not want that zoning, and do you know what else? I know that Param Drive stands to be the most affected. Not that I want to take away from Broad Acres, but Param Drive and West Shannon Drive stand the most to be most affected because stormwater, everything else is on the southern end pushing all development up here, and people want to get to 87. We are at R-18. We knew, my husband and I knew when we bought our property, we were adjacent to R-18. We're fine with R-18. That changes the game dramatically from R-12. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have closed the public hearing. So no, we're not going to listen anymore. We've listened. We're trying to do a compromise with the builders, and we're trying to do the best we can for you also. Something's going to happen to this property. They can build on it tomorrow at R-12, except for the piece that is R-18. So we're trying to do the best we can for the entire piece of property. For the people that own it have a right to use their land. They have a right to sell their land, and unless this is zone property, they'll never be able to sell the land. No, it's not. You're saying that they don't have a right to sell their land?
No, sir. I'm saying that the council, five people or four people, five people at this point, are about to make a decision for hundreds of people with very limited amount of public influence so that one or two, maybe three citizens can sell a piece of property readjusted to a perceived value for somebody who's not from here, who's going to do a great job building the house. When they leave, those boxes are going to be here. They're going to be in Greensboro, and the job is done. We are left with a map, and this is not just some new cut-in, some development that's going to be isolated by itself and made slightly different in other neighborhoods. This is a major impugnment, sandwiching even at R-12 against that R-18. That area, there's natural barriers there that will break down that are going to cause some problems.
You're fixing to lose your argument completely so you don't want any development?
No, sir. I didn't say that.
Of course you are. What else are you saying?
I'm saying that at this point, we encourage the council to leave the zone as is. Majority of land, we put up several maps tonight, are R-18 in that area. If we keep doing this piece of people's considerations, I don't think we're going to get what we want to get. The basis was a compliant 2035 plan. My wife thought of several examples of where it does not, unless you just want to read the numbers and citations. There are roads to nowhere. There are sidewalks to nowhere. It's a bowl that will not connect and reach any of those zones. So the basis of changing the zoning, whether it's R-9 or R-12 at this point, is not consistent. It's a fallacy that's consistent with 2035 plan.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, again, the public hearing is closed. So now we're going to talk about it among ourselves, the four of us. So what does everybody think? You heard the consideration to go to R-12?
I did. I did. I think what's important is, yeah, most of this is R-18, but there is about 15 acres that is unbuildable. It is going to be open space. It is in the flood zone. And you've got roughly, and I'm guessing, and I'm only guessing because I did a quick analysis of how much land was there in the R-12, but you do have roughly about 12 to 14 acres in R-12 already. And then the rest of it's R-18 that's actually buildable. So the impact of going R-12 just through the R-18 that is buildable and staying out of the flood zone, which they're not going to be, is really just, I don't want to say it's minimal, but it just does not impact the overall 50-some acres when you take out what's flood zone and when you take out what's already R-12.
Just change y'all's outlook on this property.
I said I'd considered it. I'm considering it. I still don't like that there's neighborhoods, existing established neighborhoods on each end. I don't like that, but I've wrestled with the Lacy acre one that I voted down. There is some element of connectivity and infill that as we grow, we're going to have to stomach. I'm on the fence.
Yeah, I voted that one against that one myself, but that was completely different. Not completely, but it was quite a bit different.
Yeah, it is. In my opinion, it is.
What makes it different?
I think access to the property in the R-18 that's there and the R-12, which is going to be, you know, 12 to 14 acres that's already zoned R-12. So it's a use by right now. You could roll right on in there and develop it as R-12 right now, and that's a pretty good little chunk when you take out the flood zone.
A fifth of it or quarter of it?
Well, if you see that big triangle that's R-12 and then you take down which, see that R-12? And you've got to consider that the bottom portion of that is all in, see, all that's in the flood zone. So that's unbuildable, and you can see where that triangle is coming in. Only the portion that comes down from Param and comes to the bottom there is R-18. That triangle is R-12, and then flood zone is unbuildable. As a use by right, they could come in and put R-18 in R-12s, and we would not even have a choice in the matter. I'd have no say-so. At least this way, we have a say-so. We get to look at the subdivision plan. If this is approved in some form, it's going to come back to us as a subdivision plan, and we still continue to have a little say-so.
So to Frankie or Nathan, for clarity on that, what teeth do we have when that site plan comes back? Is it, can we up or down approve it? I know Windsor guys said that we can make adjustments or suggest.
The teeth is that if they want to make an open space subdivision, they have to meet all the criteria that the council and the prior councils have identified as being the criteria laid out for open space subdivision. There's probably 30 pages of requirements for subdivision, and then the other piece that Frankie alluded to earlier is the spec book that requires the city standards for streets, sewer, water. I mean, there's hundreds of pages of stuff that they have to comply with. The difference is that if they meet the standards that the council has previously laid out, it is the council's obligation to approve it. It becomes an administrative act rather than a legislative act. Honestly, the last legislative act for this subdivision would be the rezoning. Subsequent to that, they have to meet all of the previous legislative regulations put in place by the council or any new ones. If they were to apply for a subdivision three weeks from now and in the interim, it was adopted that streets are paved with gold. That would be something that they would have to abide by in order to make a subdivision.
So the teeth aren't very sharp.
There are a lot of teeth, and they are legally binding to the point where they cannot...
I mean, our teeth, yeah. Well, we have to verify that they've done everything and they've met all the requirements and make sure that it qualifies.
But after this step, we subject ourselves to some sense of vulnerability with approving something, disproving a site plan that qualifies and checks all the boxes.
Only if you disagree with the regulations that were previously put forward by city council.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. But with the traffic studies, the impact of traffic, all that will have to take place. All that will have to be done and have to be proven in that site plan.
Ellie, what have you got?
No, this is extremely difficult, but at the same time, you know, what happens in a lot of these cases is, you know, by the time we send something to TRC, we are not, we are making sure that every obligation is met, every standard is met, and that's what makes me feel more comfortable about doing it. Do I like the traffic? No, I don't. But can we address it if we take it to, if we approve and we take it to TRC? All of that has to be approved and has to be looked at, and without it right now, nothing, none of that has to happen. And so do we have more control? Yes, we do.
Am I finished? Then I need to move you to page 68, and I ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move that the application be approved to R-12, that the application is consistent with the Graham 2035 comprehensive plan, that this action is reasonable, and then the public interest for the following reasons, that rezoning the property would be consistent with policy 3.21, 3.32, and strategy 4.3.1 of the Graham 2035 comprehensive plan.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye. All opposed likewise. Let it be shown is passed three to one with Griffin saying no. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll do our best to make this a... Are you finished, sir? Ladies and gentlemen, we're going in closed session pursuant to the terms of North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11.
On this last item. If I might just express this concern. I didn't want to get in the middle of all of the substantive debate that y'all heard. But one of the issues I do think the council needs to give some attention to is the notification issues. There was some reference to it, and I've heard more detailed kind of complaints from some of the neighbors that the written notifications to the neighbors did not go out in a timely enough fashion so that they received them prior to the planning board meeting. In some cases, the day of or the day before, but not very much. Even the notice that is the general notice in the paper, which is the same as what's on your agenda tonight, it doesn't really identify very much. If you didn't know that South Main Windsor might be somehow related to near South Main Street, there's nothing to tell you what this project's about in terms of the critical issues of Param Road or Param Drive and Wildwood. There'd be no way that you would have known that. Now, the neighbors clearly, by their turnout, found out about it and got together and discussed it, but I don't think that the notification was adequate in terms of referring just to parcels and not any kind of crossroads or other identification. So that's a concern. But, Mr. Mayor, on the next point, going into closed session. My little concern is the very last point, which you didn't read through at all. But in other words, one of the requirements for going into closed session is the purpose for which the city would be acquiring property. And it is currently listed in your motion here as historic preservation, transportation, and/or culture and recreation. Now, Mr. Mayor, that's rather broad, and I'm wondering if you could give us a little more specificity. The normal rule of thumb that the courts have held is that you're supposed to say the purpose, which generally is something like build a school, build a park.
Historic preservation. Okay?
I didn't hear your motion.
I'm sorry. I made a motion pursuant to the terms of North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A5 to establish or to instruct the public body staff on negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken on behalf of the city and negotiating the price or other material terms of contract proposed contract for the acquisition of real property located on 125 North Main Street, parcel 145867, owned by James Farshrin, the third trustee of James Farshrin, irrevocable, trust for one or more following public person, and I'm going to go with historic preservation. And I'll ask Mary.
Second. Second.
All in favor? And Ryan, if you'll come with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, ladies and gentlemen, come back to session. The property of 125 North Main Street, we did receive a counter offer which the council felt like that we needed to decline that offer and we'll put it back into their hands. With that being said, we'll look at that again if they come back with us. So now, issues on not, not on tonight's agenda. Steve Anderson has already spoken. Ronnie James? Ronnie, I can't read your writing. What does that say you have to talk about?
Hmm? Boards. I don't.
Okay, are you going to come up and speak?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. Remember, Stefan, not on the agenda, have four minutes, okay?
And I'm?
Huh?
Four?
Four.
Good deal.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ron James, 1619 Wedgewood Driving Ground. And I do want to thank the city council for allowing this session. And glad to see the mayor back and.
Thank you, Jeff.
Rest of you guys, it's good to have you here. Last meeting, I made a couple of issue, our issue and a concern, and I don't think it was addressed very well. And I'm very, very much bothered by me making a statement. Somebody in the city council doing rebuttal and they can't say nothing about rebuttal. Because I disagreed with all of it. It wasn't addressed. My concern was not addressed. And I'd like for it to be addressed in both issues. First one was, if you're going to put somebody on the, uh, any board in Graham outside of city limits of Graham, you need to send Andy Riddle, Andy Rumbley, letter apologizing what you've done to him and his family. He was extremely embarrassed because he gave a lot of good service to the city of Graham for many, many years. With a volunteer fireman and planning board, everything. The next thing is it wasn't addressed that we were not going to put anybody on outside of city limits of Graham on boards. I'd like to know. I'm a citizen of Graham, I've got a right to know.
Okay. Uh, first, let's take Andy Rumbley.
Right.
Andy moved, he did not move to the ETJ.
I know that.
And he was offered the time to finish his term out and then we, we told him we appreciated it. But he did not fit the mold. We have.
Oh yeah, I know all that. But, but if you were to bring somebody else in from out of town and you did that, uh, Andy is wrong.
Andy was not wrong. We have two out of city members of the ET, in the planning zone.
Correct, and they come from the, uh.
The ETJ.
County Commissioners.
Right.
I know.
They are ETGA members.
Right.
So that's where they live. So Andy was not wrong. I know he, he was embarrassed.
No, he was wrong.
He was not wrong, he was embarrassed.
Are you going to put any other people on, uh, any boards?
Right now, we are working on all the boards and we will, we will talk about that as, as Melody's.
So you're telling me when you decide to start putting people outside, you're sending Andy a letter apologizing to them?
No, because that board allows for five people inside and two people from the ETJ. Andy did not fit that.
Oh, I, no, no, I'm not going to argue that because I know about the, the two from the county commissioners. But what I'm saying is, in the near future, you start putting people on the boards from outside the city limits that are not designated by the county commissioners to serve on the planning board. Or are you going to send them a letter apologizing for it?
No, we will not put people outside.
So you will not apologize to nobody?
I've already apologized to Andy Rumbley and I.
Well, Andy needs to be writing publicly so people know it.
Huh?
And he's being writing so people can know it.
Andy Rumbley was apologized to by everybody.
Oh, I'm sure he was. He should have been.
He should have been.
He's been writing and, uh, so now that what happened was not condoned because we went ahead and changed it all. Not to Danny Rumbley, uh, bro, you are going to change it.
We are not going to.
Because I was told, uh, last month you were.
No.
The planning and zoning.
Well, I was told the recreation department has so many people from outside the city that pay money and they just got a right to be on there.
We're not talking about the recreation department.
Which one are we talking about?
We're talking about the planning and zoning.
Okay, well, what about the other boards?
He was not on the other.
I didn't, no, I'm not asking about Andy now, I'm asking about other boards.
They're working on the board's makeup right now.
So it's not being met outside.
I didn't say that. I said they're working on the board's makeup right now. And as that comes to the board, our board, you can come up and make your opinion on that.
After it's made, there ain't going to be no opinion about it. It won't be matter.
It's not made. It's come, it's coming in as a recommendation from the task.
Well, I don't think it's a recommendation that outside people come in and start governing the town of Graham. When was it? Lee, you'd attack the historian. What year was, uh, Boston Tea Party?
Oh, gosh.
Seventeen seventy-five? I'm thinking that's correct. All this is, is representation, no taxation with no representation. Because people outside the city are not paying taxes. Smile, that's good, I like that.
What was the second part of your question?
Are they going?
Possibility.
I don't understand.
That's the best I can tell you, it's a possibility. Let's, let's say recreation. You think all the people that are recreating in the city of Graham are from the city of Graham? They're not.
Well, I was, I know, I think Melanie made the, uh, statement that they pay money to use the city of Graham fields.
They, they pay almost double of a resident.
Well.
To play in our.
They're getting used to the money though.
But again.
They wouldn't be doing it for what?
That proposal will be voted on by this board.
Well, I'll leave it at that. I don't think it was addressed properly. But they, uh, we do need to remember that November's coming and there will be Novembers after this one. It, uh, don't end it all before then.
Sign your name up, big guy.
Yeah. Don't have the patience for it. It's sad.
It is, me too.
And I, I don't even, you know, a whole lot because you make a lot of people unhappy with a lot of the calls you make. And there's a hundred people in Graham that could serve on all the boards.
Sure.
Serve it very well.
Get them to do it.
Yeah, I think if you ask probably.
What board are you on, Ronnie?
None, I.
You just need to be.
No, I, it wouldn't bother me a bit. Except how many times your boards meet a month?
Some of them every month, some of them twice a month.
Some of them don't need to meet, but they were three or four months.
Some of them don't meet at all.
Yeah, I mean, it don't matter. Now, but the planning boards, I know they need to meet.
That's the most active board we have.
Correct, they gotta meet a lot.
They do.
But don't want to have outside people on.
All right, Ronnie, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Jennifer Tally, uh, master planning zoning issues. Four minutes, Jennifer, please.
Jennifer Tally, eight oh eight. At the last meeting.
First, there was the first meeting and then, uh, on the master plan. Um, I'm assuming Jerry.
They put it back on again and, um, it's like.
I keep coming back up and keep getting put back on the calendar. And I think it was concerned that the people couldn't come to that second meeting and then. We're told.
They can't read that.
On the calendar again, are we going to have an opportunity to speak? And at that point, they said, yes, you're going to have an opportunity to speak. So again, it was put on the agenda for tonight. Again, we were not given the opportunity to speak again. And all of, everybody that signed up here signed up to listen to people. And whether you're going to take action on it or not, I felt like people made arrangements to be here and this entire room was full. And I, I just think something is wrong when people come time after time after time and make arrangements to be here. They get a word, they get time here, whatever, and they're not being heard by the council. I mean, there's something wrong with that. It doesn't matter whether you're going to take action or not, if these people came, they should have been heard. You guys decided to table it without.
There's one person from the audience.
And that's a problem to me.
Who's tabled last month?
I just feel like, I mean, I get why he's just spoke on what he said because it just seems like when we ask very correct pointed questions, we can't get an answer. It's like, what is, it seems like there's things that are happening and decisions kind of get made either before they come to council and people are not really here to really listen to the people. Everybody that is elected is not supposed to be doing what they want. They should be doing what the citizens, the majority of the citizens want.
Jennifer, you do know that the majority of the people that spoke were in favor of this plan? The majority?
The majority of what people?
The ones that spoke last month.
Okay, at last month's meeting, we were told, when you could not be here, Jerry, that you were going to not have it on the agenda. So I literally had Monday to Tuesday, just like these people, from Monday to Tuesday to try to get people here and there was a lot of people that couldn't come. So you cannot, no one can sit here and tell me or try to convince me that the majority of the citizens of Graham is for this plan. That's just not possible.
Spoke, the majority were for.
Well, I know, but it, I, I mean, anybody can stack the deck. If the other side doesn't know that we're even going to have it on the agenda and we don't find out until the day before and the city certainly knew they were going to have it on the agenda. They made sure that impact elements was here and all the people that wanted it were here.
We don't stack the deck.
I mean, I, I'm just saying, my point is, is that when you have people that come to speak, they should be listened to. And when someone asks you, Melody, directly, what is the reason that you want to have people from outside of Graham come and sit on our boards? That, that citizen deserves to have an answer.
And I gave a direct answer, a very direct answer, but it is in a summary report from a task force. So I gave a very clear and precise answer, Jennifer.
Thank you. Okay, so what is the answer?
I'm not going to repeat for you. Decide what you're going to talk to us about.
I'm a citizen too, Melody, you can't.
It was already decided and I'm not going to argue with you.
All right, that's.
I'm not arguing.
So you're saying.
I'm just asking, why do you want to have people?
Was.
From outside of the city to sit on the board.
Personally do not vote. Let me make one thing clear. I do not vote on the task force. There is a task force of, of people who are making decisions for requests to the city council. Period, Jennifer. Period. It is not Melody Wiggins, it is a task force who have asked for this and we are accommodating them. We are listening to the public and doing our due justice of what we are supposed to be doing.
I'm, uh, literally, I don't want to, I don't think the citizens of Graham want animosity with the council. They want some answers and they want to be heard. And there were people that have never spoken. I know, Griffin, you know this, that people were here that have never spoken before this council about the master plan. And once again, third time in a row, they were not given the opportunity to speak. I just don't feel like that's fair.
If you blame anything, anybody for that, it's me.
I, I don't blame you, Mayor.
Well, you have to, because I'm the one that set that up. I set it up as a consensus for us to try to elim- eliminate this talk that we're having right now. It did not work out right, so we, we're going to do what these guys wanted to do. We're going to have a, a talk in here on the twenty-second, is that right? And we will discuss what we can keep and what we throw out and then we'll bring it back.
Okay, so the point of me saying that was to say, can we all have a consensus on when people can come to speak on the master plan? And can we have more than one day advance notice? That's all I'm asking.
You always have plenty of notice because the.
You have more than one day, yeah.
Okay, so is it going to be this October meeting?
I don't know till after this meeting, we have on the twenty-second.
So are you saying they can't come to the meeting on the twenty-second?
Everybody can come to any public meeting.
Okay, so I could say that they can come to the October twenty-second meeting.
Will they be, if they have a work session.
Okay.
So no, they probably will not speak. They will speak in our committee.
Okay, so if I'm a citizen of Graham and they've never gotten, been able to be able to speak on the master plan, when can they come and be heard by this council?
As soon as we put it back on the agenda. We will put it back on there. You're making too much of this, Jennifer. It's easily. I mean, when it's on the agenda, this was not, I asked them to put the planned consent, uh, not consent, a consensus. Uh, we just dropped a word, so that was ours. We should have put that on there, it's consensus, and that's what I wanted to do.
I appreciate you trying to, um, help.
We are helping. All, all of us are helping.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Jennifer, I wanted to mention too, you'd mentioned that three times, you know, the community hasn't had the opportunity to speak. And actually, the two meetings ago, it, it was that opportunity, everyone got to speak at that time. Now, the last two meetings, the meeting before was just water and sewer. I didn't restrict. I just said, we're talking about water and sewer and there was some people that actually talked about a few other things, but that was all.
Called down for it quite severely.
Called down by, by whom?
By Melanie, though.
Oh.
When Todd Allen Smith was speaking, I heard it myself.
Well, yes, yes, but he was talking about eminent domain, which is not in the plan. It's not there. It's not in the plan anywhere on any document, so that's the only reason he was called down. Uh, that was false and it's not there. But there was that opportunity there.
I, I understand what you're saying, Lee, but there are plenty of people that were here tonight, were here at the second meeting, you know, that, for water and sewer, that were not given the opportunity to speak. You know, obviously, there's things that happen where if the very first meeting, there wasn't a lot, a lot of time. And in fact, Jerry, please back me up. You were sitting right at the meeting, Lee, and Jerry was sitting at the meeting. And Jerry, I know you told me that you did not think it was going to be on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I lost you on that one. Because I don't know what we're talking about.
This was when you were out.
Well, when I was out, I didn't know what was on the agenda.
No, I, I understand, but what I'm saying is, we had just met with you, Lee, on Thursday, the businesses had all met. Did we or didn't we not say that it would not be on the agenda on that Tuesday?
Oh, you're talking about when Jerry and I met with the businesses?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, but we did that, didn't we?
No, I don't recall that being, that we said it would not be on the agenda. I don't, I don't recall. I don't.
Maybe, and I'm sorry, I don't.
But, uh. Jennifer, I don't recall, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't recall if that was.
It was, it was not going to be on the agenda from that Thursday to that Tuesday. And we found out on Monday that it was on the agenda. So I'm just saying to you, there were businesses that could not come at the last minute. Then the second meeting, they weren't allowed to speak, and the third meeting, they were not allowed to speak. So that's all I'm saying. I, I understand that y'all have spoken, I know you've heard from a lot of people, but there's some people that do want to speak that have never spoken on this issue and they would like to know when they can come so that they'll quit wasting their time. And Jerry, you know, you absolutely addressed that early on and I know that was your goal, is to stop wasting all these people's time so that they won't have to keep coming to council meeting and not be heard. But that's, I'm just asking a pointed question, when can they come? So it's not the work session.
Let's do this. The next time you see it on the agenda, you get your fruits ready. How about that?
That's from a, literally from a Monday to a Tuesday, I need to know.
No, 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 Jennifer, it comes out on Thursday. It does come out on Thursday. All of our agendas come out on Thursday, prior to the Tuesday meeting.
If you see it on the agenda, it was advertised from Thursday the week before.
Okay, will it be on the November agenda?
I don't know. It's up to the work session that we have. If we get it completed in that work session, we might have, might have to have two work sessions. But if we get a, a workable plan in that work session, we'll put it on.
Jerry, do you remember the conversation? Because I'm going to just verbatim quote you. This plan is not going to be adopted at the next city council meeting. It is a plan. We are going to just see what we like, see what we don't like. We're going to throw it up against the wall and see what sticks. Do you recall the conversation?
That's why we broke the, the water and sewer out from the plan to, so we could go.
But that was at the meeting with the businesses. And I'm just telling you, I'm telling you the truth when I say the businesses, all of those businesses, thirty-some businesses that were, that spoke, you know, that were, that were concerned about this plan, were told that it wasn't going to be an issue and literally from one day to the next, now it's on the agenda. So, you know.
It was not on the agenda tonight to be voted on as a plan. It was on the agenda to be a consensus to postpone this and put it on the shelf.
Yeah, there was no motion in the plan to adopt it. It was just listed as an item on the agenda.
I, I, I find that really funny, actually. I mean, you guys try to wordsmith every, I mean, I get, Jerry, you know, you're going to put on the agenda, adopt master plan and you're going to put on the agenda, master plan.
Jennifer, it wasn't my words.
You're going to put, adopt master plan and master plan and we're supposed to know the difference of what that, what that is on the agenda. If you put master plan on here, I have been told by numerous different council members, you better be here.
It's not a master plan for, to begin off with.
Oh, my God, and now we go, it's not a plan, it's not factual, it's not anything, so.
I'm sure the four minutes.
You act like we don't have any reason to be frustrated.
Jennifer, thank you very much. No, I've got Richard Shevlin next. I'll come back to you. Richard?
Richard Shevlin. Five ten Wildwood Lane. I am here tonight, uh, for the Alamance County Veterans Association or Services.
Please do. Uh, I think I told Chuck that we could do this next month, that Frankie and I had talked about it, so we still got time to get this in. So we can take this right here and put it on our agenda for next month?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Okay.
But I got my notes, so. No, it's okay. Uh, so, uh, we wanted to get on the agenda for next month, uh, even though it was cutting it kind of close for us because our event's going to be November ninth, even though Veterans Day is November eleventh. So the parade will go on. We are working with Brian Haygood to, you know, follow, we'll be under their insurance policies and we're going to get through all that. Uh, of course, we have the festival afterwards, so, uh, which will be next month. Really, that's all, I, I needed to make sure is that we were going to get this, get everyone invited. And, uh, like I said, just let you know that we are working with Brian Haygood to, uh, to make sure, to, uh, to make sure this is on the agenda. I had, I was out for some surgery as well, so that's, I didn't make the, I didn't make the deadline on time, so.
We're excited about it and, and Frankie had already talked about putting it on the agenda.
Great, really appreciate the staff's support and everything, so, uh, of course, after the parade, it's, it's a six annual parade, so it's going to, it's gotten really big. So the road closures are going to stay the same and of course, the festival after. I did hear from Mary, I am going to get with the funeral home because we requested the second block as well. So I'm going to get with them about the timeframe that we're going to, we're going to be there to just make sure it doesn't interfere with their business services. So if that's required in writing, I can make sure I get that and submit it to, uh, the board on November second.
Okay, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Uh, next we got, uh, Mark Jones, he left. Uh, Daniel Alvis. Daniel, it's good to see you, sir.
I just wanted to thank, uh, city council, all the city employees. Rocket for Research, we just held this past weekend, was a big success. We hadn't got all the money counted yet, uh, we just too tired to count it, so we just dug it in the safe. When I get that number, we'll get it to you all. According to Max, he's been, this was a six annual. He's had it at high point, I think, brought in a couple of times. In his opinion, this was the best one he's ever done. We had a great turnout. I think all the businesses done well, the verdict, Beer Co., we appreciate all them being involved. We're already planning next years. So I'll be probably coming next month to ask permission for next September. That's how far in advance we want to get permission to do this because it's going to be a lot bigger. We're going to get a lot more businesses involved. But thank you all. I hope some of y'all came out and enjoyed it. I was trying to get around to all the places, uh, missed a couple of acts. We had twenty-two different music acts. So that's pretty good. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Daniel. We appreciate it. Glad you brought it into Graham. All right. Aaron, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Mary, I'm sorry, I skipped by you.
Mayor and council, I just want to make you guys aware of when you leave tonight, City House been lit up pink. As well as the PD, they've had a few difficulties, so it may not be as bright, but we're working through that. And this is in observance of October, express cancer awareness, um, month. And then this is a campaign by the, um, Alamance Charitable Foundation and our PD is participating in that. There will be another campaign in October that is specific to lung cancer. And the unique, um, part of this program is that a hundred percent of the funds stay within Alamance County.
Tom, I came by, went by you. What have you got?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to prolong an already aggravated discussion. But could I focus just a minute on the, the narrow part of, of Mr. James' comment with respect to concern about the outside residents? Uh, I do think that's going to be a great concern to a number of, uh, people, people in Graham. And also, I don't think it should stand even that the implication is that this is some sort of broad-based committee. This is a committee selected by one person. And the council allowed that one council member to assemble this group, but it is a group of very like-minded people who have a particular, seemingly, a particular agenda. But I'm not going to go into that right now. What I want to ask is this question. That task force heard a report from a, uh, city employee that had looked into the issue of state law and outsiders being on boards. And the discovery from the staff was that certain, uh, boards are, by statute, prohibited from having non-resident members. The planning board was one, it has five city members, two ETJ, those are specified. But the other board, according to the discussion at the meeting, was that the Appearance Commission also shall have only residents of the city of Graham as members. And yet, Mr. Mayor, we find that we've had in Graham for over a year, or two or three maybe, a member who, like in Andy Rumbley's case, moved outside the city and by state law is no longer eligible to be on that board, but apparently that doesn't matter to the city of Graham.
It does, she just resigned.
Yeah, she's no longer on the board. Ah, well, thank you. It's news to me.
Okay. Vanessa resigned this past month.
Month? Okay, of course so.
Yeah. Well, she me, met, missed one meeting, so she resigned two months ago.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Brian?
Can we hear the names of the task force that's?
Not tonight, not tonight. Let's wait, I'll, I'll, I'll print it and send it to you. Would that be all right? Okay, would you do that for me, Melody? Okay. Brian, have you got anything? Melody, have you got anything else?
I do, uh, sadly.
Please, tell me, you talking about Helen?
I am.
Please.
Sadly, uh, the Historic Resources Commission has lost a member of our board. Ms. Helen Sharp, uh, died tragically, uh, on Friday. She did have cancer. It, it was, I think we were all shocked. It was, I, I don't think we thought it was anything close to that and, um, it's been a very shocking, uh, sad time. But, uh, we have lost a, a very great individual who worked very hard and gave great service to the city and it is, it is, uh, with, with deep, um, sadness that, that we've borne her loss.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you. Mayor, approach him. Uh, nothing, Mayor. Frankie.
Uh, Melody and, um, stole my thunder about cancer awareness and breast cancer awareness month. We did lose a valuable member of our, one of our boards and commissions this past week. We also have staff members that, um, have some health challenges as well and, um, just keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers, um, as they are battling this, this, um, this monster of a disease. So, um, the, the pink that you see throughout the city, uh, in October, uh, keep in mind that, um, we have those affected on the staff level that are, are, are meeting that challenge head on.
All right, I appreciate everybody's concern for me. Thank you for, for your concern. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye. Thanks, everybody.